Okay.
Okay, it's encouraging to see the dialogue going on and the collaboration, so I appreciate that, but I do want to call this meeting to order. We do have some additions to the agenda, Mr. Acting CIO, if you would outline that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can advise you of the following additions and corrections to the agenda. The following addendum items were added, number nineteen, which is a community services report from Recreation and Culture regarding the Old Town Hall Public Art Installation, and added item number twenty, which is appointment of members of council to committees related to Main Street District Business Improvement Area, Board of Management, Councilor Quapis, and New Market Environmental Advisory Committee, Councilor Vague. In addition, there was an administrative correction that has been made to item seven of the agenda, and that has to do with the New Market, the Heritage New Market Advisory Committee minutes of June twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, and specifically item number nine of the minutes as they relate to delegated authority for the issuance of heritage permits. And administratively, the minute has been amended as follows, that the Heritage New Market Advisory Committee requests the senior planner, community planning, discuss delegated heritage permits decisions with the Chair of Heritage New Market prior to issuing a heritage permit, and that any applications to remove or demolish be brought to the entire committee for consideration and recommendation to council. That's the extent of the changes. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for clarification for any members of council? If not, then could I have a motion then to provide the additions in the agenda? Councilor Twenty, Councilor Broom, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Declarations of pecuniary interest. Regional Councilor?
Thanks very much. Number eighteen, item eighteen in our agenda is in relation to the public meeting this evening, related to two sixty Eagle Street. Going back a number of years now, I've been declaring a conflict in relation to that property as I own a property that's within the notification area and fairly, fairly close to it, and so I'll continue to declare that conflict.
Okay, so you get the night off. Thank you. Any other declarations? Being done then, our first presentation is Mary Frances Turner and Paul May, although I didn't see Paul, but Mary Frances with the Viva Next Project to give us a Young Street and Davis Drive update. We usually provide ten minutes, Mary Frances, is that sufficient?
Yeah. Thank you, and good afternoon. I'm pleased to be here this afternoon, and I am joined actually by a number of my colleagues from the Rapid Transit Office, many faces who look familiar to, with you, who work on different elements of the project, whether it's engineering or communities on work, or helping us communicate about the projects. So I have to thank them for all their hard work on all these, on the projects. We're here today just to give you a brief update on our finishing work on the Davis Drive project, where we are in activities on Young Street, and activity that continues on supporting businesses during the construction program and some of our other communications. So, as you know, the Rapid Transit program is building a series of Rapid Transit projects throughout the region, and the Rapid Transit program is funded by the provincial government through Metrolinks, and it's a one point eight billion dollar program that has been underway for a number of years. We have a number of segments which are funded and are indicated on the diagram on the, on the screen and on your screens, showing the anticipated completion dates for these various segments which are either completed or beginning to near completion, which we're always excited about. As you know, our work on Davis Drive towards its transformation is mostly complete. Most of the work that we have left to do on Davis Drive is really related to warranty-type work, and we were able on October the seventh to celebrate with the Honorable Stephen Del Duca, Minister of Transportation, the Chairman of the Region, Mr. Emerson, the President and CEO of Metrolinks, Bruce McQuag, and your mayor, the transformation of, of the Davis Drive corridor. And there was a good opportunity for us to, to meet there at the hospital, along with the President of the hospital, and to do an overview of the project and then to ride the Rapid Way. So as we mentioned, most of our work that's left to be done now is mostly warranty work. We have work left to be done on the Keith Bridge, where we have some warranty work to deal with some of the concrete surfaces, and then we'll be monitoring the plants that have now been completed on the corridor over the next two years as well. So that's the majority of the work, the, all of the hard work we did together over a number of years to get it to this stage, we think now speaks for itself, and we do, do receive a number of positive comments from the community about, about the transformation of the corridor. Along with that is a, is a healthy and very positive story about the growing ridership on the corridor. And along, along the corridor, there has been run, running time savings of about thirty-three percent compared to previous running time in mixed traffic. As well, we've seen some considerable growth in commuters using the service. Overall, we've seen ridership growth of thirty-nine percent, which we're excited about, and this is just the really beginning of, of ridership growth and transformation along the corridor. And as your intensification continues to manifest along the corridor, we would expect that ridership to continue to grow. So the runtime savings you're seeing up here is a, is a pretty straight comparison of our previous service running in conventional traffic and then the combined travel time savings that are now being experienced on, on the corridor. And we'll continue to monitor that, but I think we're very pleased with the kind of traffic that we're now seeing on the corridor. And we always remind people to keep in mind, particularly as, as they observe the Blue Service, and I rode it on Friday, if you've never rode the Blue Service in peak periods, either coming into New Market or leaving New Market, I really encourage people to have that experience. It's a really easy way to explain to people who observe the buses that are traveling down Young Street to understand the kind of loading that takes place at every stop, and by the time you hit King City Side Road, you're lucky to find a seat, and for sure by the time you hit Jefferson Side Road, you are in standing capacity. It's an extraordinary experience to see the volume of traffic and riders that are riding the Blue Corridor. It is a very successful corridor, and, and so it's, it's helpful because you're at the top end of the service, because we still hear from time to time, why isn't there more people on that bus? Well, if it was fully leaving New Market, there would be no room for people to get on, but it's definitely a standing room only from Bernard South on these services, even double line with five-minute headways, so that's, that's a lot of ridership. So, just to give you a little bit of comparables. As well, there's been some new services introduced as a result of the introduction of the yellow line out to the four oh four. If you've been to the parking lot, you'll see that it's completely restored and reconstructed. Go and, and Viva do go out to the four oh four. YRT is now running express services from this lot down to Fairview Mall, which is great, and also down onto the Highway Seven corridor, and those services didn't used to exist in the past. So if you're over in that end of town, you don't have to go all the way over to Young Street and then come back to get to, to Highway Seven and the four oh four. You can take a direct line by using this lot. And Chris was just telling me that also Durham is running into this spot, which is very interesting. I haven't seen the Durham bus, but he assures me that they're coming south from Beaverton, hitting this lot and going across to Uxbridge. So this is, this is a really great example of the kind of connections that are now being made and the types of alternative service arrangements that people can have, whether you're traveling across Davis Drive or whether you're trying to get a better commuting time down the four oh four. Remaining work along the corridor includes the restoration program for the Union Hotel and the adjacent home. More recently, you can see that we put up some courting and thanking people for their patience as we complete our program. Our next major phase of work that we're doing on the homes involves restoration of some of the brickwork associated with the buildings. These older buildings sometimes have challenges with the fastening of the brickwork up to the house, and as you move them, it doesn't help with the, with those arrangements, so they're in their permanent location. Our work is to go through and complete the restoration work of the brick facade, do some, some additional structural work inside the, the two homes, and, and then to complete our site, our site plan work, which includes some leveling of the ground and work and restoration around the buildings. These buildings will then be sold to, to an interested buyer for active reuse, for whatever uses the commercial industry likely is, is interested in using them for. So we're looking at spring twenty seventeen to complete that restoration work. It's kind of patient work because we have to go around and tap into the brickwork and make sure that we, we've completed all of the restoration around the outside of the building. So we appreciate everyone's patience while we complete, complete this piece of work. Turning the corner, we're very active in the construction phase of the Young Street corridor, as you know, and there is mostly utility work going on in the corridor. You recall that the first major piece of work we do is to take the utilities and set them all back, and you can see here we're making good progress on this piece of the corridor. The gas main relocation has been completed. Bell and Rogers are going to be complete by the end of twenty sixteen. Many of you'll be familiar with the pole work that's going on. If you've been on the corridor and got caught as they're spinning the very, very long hydropoles and putting them into their locations, that pole installation work continues, and you can see them also, God bless their souls, these men who are way up in these bucket trucks, they're very high in the air. I wouldn't be up there myself, but they're up in the bucket trucks and they're rewiring those poles as well. So that work will continue, and Linda and I were just talking about the disruption that we know it's caused to Young Street from time to time. Those, those time, the amount of time that it's take for them to do that pole installation, which requires us to close Young because we need to swing the, they swing the pole right across the street before they can stand it up, has diminished considerably. So they're getting very good at reducing that time that's needed for that work. And then finally, all relocations to be completed south of Randy Lane and just north of Muleak should be in place by November seventh. So good progress on this section of the contract. We have two other segments in New Market where, not New Market, in Richmond Hill, sorry, and Paul, and the best, the rest of the Young Street team are at Richmond Hill this afternoon to update them on the progress with respect to this project. So in total, all of our activities in preparation of road construction, because that'll be the next phase, once we get the utilities out of the way, you'll see road construction. You can see some of the preparatory work, all the medians have been removed, temporary traffic signals go up. We've built a new retaining wall at Young and Muleak, and again, these are all with respect to getting that widening in place. We removed signs, hydrants, and lots of details that for a lot of people, there's, they don't understand why we come back to the same location, but there's many, many elements of the project that get moved throughout this particular process. So next year, you can begin to expect to see the actual road construction work. It will commence in the spring, which will deal with the road widening. There'll be lots of different traffic stages, and for those of you that came through Davis Drive with us, you'll know that the different stages move the lanes in multiple locations depending on, on what segment you're in. We'll complete the source sewer and then we'll do the boulevards. With respect to the actual work itself and the schedule, the work is, the schedule for the work is under pressure. We expect that for this particular segment, if you go back to that chart that was on the front page there, it indicated that the majority of the work will be completed in twenty eighteen, although we do expect to see some work on the Young Street corridor carrying over into twenty nineteen. So we'll continue to look at the schedule. We're examining options to how to continue to accelerate the work, but for the most part, we expect twenty, late twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, before the majority of the work is completed on the corridor, and we'll continue to be monitoring that and reporting out on schedule and progress on the corridor. Traffic management is monitored in a number of different ways. We try and use every communication channel that's available to us. The now and the normal have, have really been helpful, I think, to a lot of drivers. It gives them a sense or a perspective, how much longer they're going to be in traffic if they are stuck, but we use all sorts of other mediums to, to, to advise the, the public as to what traffic is like, as well as working closely with our contractors and subcontractors not to use side streets and really enforcing that with their subs, and doing our best to maintain poor lanes of traffic throughout this period. Linda and her team work very closely with the Chamber of Commerce on supporting all of the businesses along the corridor during this busy time, and that includes all of the various kinds of campaign materials that you see listed here. And I would say the business support program has been really well-recognized and helps us really keep people's eye on the fact that the corridor is still really open for business, and, and we actively encourage people to, to get out on the corridor. There is any number of ways for the public to remain in contact with the project. You'll be familiar with all of these particular techniques that we use, and, and we have quite a few followers who do follow us on the website. More recently, we just, Sophia and her team, Sophia, can you wave your hand there, just completed a coloring contest. I had the pleasure of helping market last Friday with children, talking about their vision of the transformation of the corridor. We'll be publishing those soon. It might make for a great calendar, so we, we try to ensure that we're engaged with the community in as many ways as possible. You see us at the festivals and at the marketplace and in different, different parts of the community. And that completes my overall presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, I have two people in the queue, Councilor Hampton, then Councilor Quapis, then Councilor Broom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mary Frances. Davis Drive is looking really good and glad to see there's more, some more direct destination options for people at the park and ride from New Market getting down to Fairview and to the Highway Seven corridor. My question is, I, I'm the Heritage Rep for Town of New Market, and there's been, it's been a big topic, the Union Hotel, and members are asking for more information as to what's happening. I was wondering if somebody from your department could, or somebody from Viva could come out and speak to Heritage as to the restoration plans and scheduling and things like that?
Sure.
That'd be great. Okay, maybe somebody from staff could be in contact with you and we'll arrange something. That'd be much appreciated.
Thank you. Councilor Quapis?
Thank you. Really appreciate the update. Just wanted to get a little bit more information about how is traffic mitigation being done through some of the streets that are going parallel to Young Street? We learned very closely on what transpired when Davis was under construction. As you may know, I'm very much involved with traffic and speed mitigation through residential areas, and I'm receiving tremendous amount of feedback that streets such as Sanford that goes parallel to Young Street is getting tremendous amount of traffic as a matter of speed that's becoming quite unsafe. Is there anything that you're doing to discourage people cutting away from Young Street onto those streets?
The, the meeting is being streamed, so if we can get you to speak into the mic, it's beneficial. it's beneficial for our viewing audience.
Thank you, Counselor. As, as we did with Davis Drive, similar to that, we, we do send notices to all our contractors there not to go into any of the side streets, as Mary Frances mentioned. And in terms of, I believe the town has done some traffic studies. So, we have met with the town and staff to discuss traffic infiltration and certainly are prepared, like we, we did with Davis Drive, to put local traffic only on the side streets. But the, the, the challenge with traffic infiltration too is that people use their, their devices, all different types of apps that people have access to. And they, you know, they, they follow where the least, the least amount of traffic impact leads them. So, that is always a, a challenge, but certainly we're looking at different ways to mitigate.
Thank you. I would strongly encourage, if possible, to put those signs on some of those parallel streets in order to discourage people from taking the residential streets to bypass Young Street.
Yeah. And the, and the positive thing too is that for the most part, the, the lanes on Young Street have been maintained at four lanes, so two in each direction. So, I, I live in the area myself and travel up to New Market a lot. And the impact to me, the flow has been maintained relatively well, except for when the large poles are being swung over, over Young Street. But for the most part, it's, it's been maintained relatively well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Broom.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your presentation. Could you repeat that example that you gave from page five with regards to the, the ridership growth? Quite impressed by it. I just wanted to hear it one more time about how...
Sure. So, I'll just go back to... There we go. So, along the corridor, there has been a runtime savings of 33%. So, if you had been traveling in the corridor in mixed traffic, your travel time is 33% faster than if you were continuing to sit through congestion. And then the actual ridership growth itself has increased by 39%. And 61% of those customers are using yellow Viva. So, there's still a, there's still a very healthy local service, which is running as well along the corridor. But 61% of the overall ridership is, is using a Viva. So, we've seen overall ridership growth between 1,200 and 30 previous riders and now over 1,700 riders on a regular basis in that corridor.
And in terms of, of people, 39%, is there like a...
Those are the, so the numbers are, the ridership growth is from 1,230 riders compared to 1,720 riders today.
Great. Thank you. And who's here from customer service?
Well...
Customer service or, yeah, community liaisons?
I just wanted to, to thank you on behalf of the parents and the students and the teachers of one of the high schools. We had a situation where a bus was basically causing some kids to be late for school. And you rectified it very quickly. The parents are thrilled. And you're very professional. And I want to thank you very much for, for doing that. I didn't think that'd be something you could just change so quickly. And, and that was really great. So, I wanted to thank you for that. And just in conjunction with what Counselor Quapis had mentioned, Sanford to Savage to Young is also a bit of a, a bypass, along with Clear Meadow to Rainey to McCaffrey. And Counselor Bezance's ward is also becoming, or is and has been for a little bit of time, a bit of a bypass. So, if you could be conscious to those streets as well, I'd appreciate it. And thank you again for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bezance.
Yes. Thank you very much. And thanks, thanks as well for the, the presentation. I'm really happy to hear that you have a route to Fairview Mall.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't aware of that. And when I do travel down to the city, I've always tried and take the train. But that's limited to, to morning and afternoons. And so, it's, it's good to know because sometimes I need to take the bus, the go-bus, all the way downtown. If you've got a midtown meeting, isn't that convenient?
It's sensible. No.
So, that, that connects right to the Fairview Mall subway station?
Subway. Yeah. Perfect.
Oh, that's, that's, I really think you need to promote the heck out of that because I'm sure that there are many other people who would prefer to take transit quicker rather than sit on the Death Valley parking lot for, for hours trying to get downtown. So, that's, that's really great. But my question relates more to, and again, it's, it's about sort of the, the congestion. Now that everything is sort of cleared up at Young and Davis and it looks great, I still notice that, that there's, there's sort of a blockage there. And I've been told that it's because of the timing of the lights. So, so when that backs up from Young and, south of Davis on Young, it does force, or a lot of the traffic then goes along Eagle, mostly the traffic trying to get to the mall.
Yeah.
And it's probably not specifically your area, but, but I've been informed that it's sort of now the, the timing of the lights north of Davis along Young still isn't quite working to, to free up traffic flow. And so, now with, when construction is south of Millard there and, you know, a little bit of, of backlog there at Young and Davis, it just really slows things down. So, I don't know if there's, you know, it's supposed to be freed up now. And, and there are occasions that you really don't see that. And, and that's...
I think, I think the congestion continuing to head north on Young Street will always continue to be a challenge for sure for the community, you know. And it's responsive to different conditions. Right now, the construction is obviously going to break up that pace. But volume and whether you're there on a Saturday, those are all factors as well. Although, we always work with Transportation Services to see what tweaks could be made to the lights. I noticed that one of the lights coming north always is triggering and going, going red when there's no traffic. So, there are certain things that can be done to tweak and adjust the lights to see if we can get better performance out of them. But there will be some limitations, I think, you know. Until the widening program happens north on, on Young Street, north of Davis Drive, again, some of the congestion is just pure volume, trying to get in and out of the mall on a Saturday. And they're going to come out that mall as many ways as they can. And so, whatever can be done to help with the lights will be done. And then it's just, you know, volume.
I, I do know York Region Transportation Services are out looking at those, those lights on an ongoing basis, just to, to manage, you know, help manage as much as possible. And they, they also have to deal with, now you have, you know, you have pedestrian crossings, the bus signals, the regular traffic signals. So, they, they have improved it somewhat, but they are, it's a continuous, continuous thing that they're out monitoring.
Well, that's, that's good to hear that there's, they're looking at it. Because even during the weekday when, when the construction on the Viva Nexus is happening, if you've got that backlog at Young and Davis, it just slows everything down because the construction exacerbates it. And just, just another comment as well. I know that, that you have to stage the utility movements and stuff like that. But the sidewalks there have been churned up for, and I'm speaking mostly at Young and Millard, have been churned up for quite some time. And further down Millard, we've also got the Glenway construction that's, that's got sidewalks closed. And for any residents who are needing some mobility support with scooters or whatever, I mean, they're, they're now on the streets. And, and so whatever we can do to make sure that, that the sidewalks, to the extent possible, can be fixed or repaired as a priority would be, would be helpful.
You can certainly, like if there's any residents who would like to make sure they leave us with their name, so that they can be more informed about the movements, because the sidewalks will continue to be in that, this week closed here, next week closed on the other side. And, and for those who are additionally challenged, that can make for, for a great deal of difficulties. But the team is more than willing to help and make sure that they're closely kept informed of where the current sidewalk closures are and making sure that, I mean, it's no use getting halfway down the street to find that the sidewalk's now closed and they have to turn around and go back. Nothing could be more frustrating. So, we, we work really hard with our constructor to make sure people are informed at the right points that the sidewalk is closed ahead cross here. But it, it can happen. There are so many people on the corridors, particularly with the utilities and so on. And it can, it can be a frustrating experience. So, but please don't hesitate to call Linda and the team. And, and if anyone needs special attention in the neighborhood, we'll take care of them.
We have, Sophia goes out for a corridor walk every week and picks a specific area of Young Street and New Market to focus attention on. So, we can certainly look in that area this week. And at our last presentation to the William Rowe Apartments, we went to visit the residents there. And we had probably about 50 people, I think, who went out. They were concerned about their sidewalk in front, so that was the target. And we went out and improved the area somewhat, considering construction. But we will target that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Regional Counselor.
Thanks very much. Yeah. I just want to start with a couple of things and say that, like yourselves, definitely receiving a lot, lot more positive feedback about Davis Drive and, and certainly the overall appearance improvements to the corridor. So, it's really good to be, hearing that because, as you know, there was a number of years where we had tougher feedback than that. So, we certainly turned a major corner there. And I think it helps people understand the Young Street project and, and be more patient with it when they, when they understand sort of the outcome and the potential it has. The other thing I'd say is that not only has, you know, there've been some improvements, and then you've outlined in transit ridership and times. And I'd also say that from my, my review in the transit ridership numbers, it's also trending upwards almost monthly. So, so the, the numbers you're providing now also should, you know, are continued to, to grow and improve. The, the other thing that I wanted to mention though, was that obviously we're seeing redevelopment.
Yes.
So, we've got, you know, the, the improvements in beautification of the corridor, the transit time and ridership improvements. But the other part is we have, you know, 212 Davis Drive, a rental building under construction. We have a in-process on the north side, just north of the church, or just east of the church. We have a, a mid-sized condo project moving forward. And we have the Oscar Group looking at an office complex closer to the hospital. And they're, they're right now currently trying to lease that up. So, there's, there's also that redevelopment activity that we're looking for. And frankly, there's a lot more interest than just that. That's, that's some of the more concrete ones. So, I think some really positive direction. The other thing I wanted to say was, on a minor note, and you know I've contacted you about the large pole installation a couple of times. And it, and it definitely is going much smoother now. I experienced it myself. So, I'm glad to see that they're, they've worked out the system, you know, as, as well as they can because it is challenging. There's no question. The, a couple of questions I have for you. So, it might, would it be fair to say from what I heard of the description of the Union Hotel, that it's likely, if not very likely, that the Union Hotel will be put into the marketplace in 2017?
I, I can't say absolutely it'll be in the marketplace in 2017. But that's, the goal is to get it ready for 2017 to go into the marketplace. And it would be an early priority in our surplus lands along the corridor to see those buildings get actively used. I mean, it's hard to keep them up. As you know, you have to pay for the heat, the cost and everything else. So, it'd be great to see them actively back in the marketplace and finding a, a final user for them.
Okay. Another question I have is just on process and sort of trying to pick up on lessons learned from Davis. There was some, some feeling, and you know, sometimes it's just people missing messages and how communication actually does penetrate or not. But there was some sense that some people felt they didn't know about the business loss process, the business loss claim process that's out there. Have, have we been able to sort of get to every business and say, and let them know, look at, in, in the case or in the instance that you are experiencing this, there is a process. This is what, this is who you contact. This is what you do?
Yes. I, I think it's fair to say that all the businesses along Davis Drive have met on any number of occasions, either with our staff or with the property...
That's right. I mean, I'm talking, if I said the wrong one, I'm talking about Young Street now.
On Young Street. Yeah. And that process is now underway as well to make sure people are informed. Usually, the business loss claim process does follows.
Absolutely. Yeah.
But, but that would be part of our information sharing.
Absolutely. So, so basically what the community liaisons do and what Sophia's done is gone out and introduced herself to every business along the corridor, not once now, but twice. So, they've had personal visits. And certainly, any discussions like that, there's, it's on our website. We direct them to it. We'll connect them with the region. So, absolutely.
Can we just, my request would be, and I, I'm hearing the wording and I understand. I mean, I, we're trying to stick to budgets too. We're not in the business of, of sort of promoting claims, so to speak. At the same time, can we just make sure that even if it's once, that it's not just if somebody raises it, we make sure they know how to do it or that it's on the, but that at some point, the businesses are, even if it's just a one-time notice and a bulletin, but something stated that says, if you have questions or to find out more about it, so that we have proactively at least once said, here's the process, as opposed to when it comes up dealing with it. If we could give that some consideration, I think it would be the, a, a good thing and a fair thing to do. So...
Thank you.
My other question was about bike lanes. I recently heard some comments about bike lane on Young Street and then bike lanes on other parts of the Viva system going forward. Are some receiving different treatments than other? I, I mean, on seven, it's, it's the painted lanes, which is what I'm assuming Young Street's getting. Am I correct in that I heard recently that perhaps other segments are getting a more segregated treatment or a slightly raised or...
So, over the life of this project, which has been ongoing since, you know, since we began design back in 2005, 2006 on the various segments, the evolution of bike lane design has, has evolved. And different municipalities, different experts all have different views on what the state of the art is for bike lanes. So, I do think our, the Rapid Transit corridor will be a study in different styles and types of bike lanes, what works well, what doesn't work well. So, some of them indeed are raised, some of them are at surface, some of them are behind a curb. They're all, each corridor tends to have a different style of, of bike lane. At Davis Drive, as you know, it doesn't have a segregated bike lane because there simply wasn't room to do it. And Young Street will for the most part be on-street. Parts of Highway 7 and metropolitan center will be raised. The bike lane on the 400 crossing will actually be in the middle of the bridge.
Right.
Which will be a very unique feature. So, it, it does vary. And, and I would say in large part, it varies because it, it continues to be an evolving subject.
True.
And conversation.
So, to, to that point, and I, I think I, I might know the answer, but I, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this. I mean, I'm aware of that there's lots of competing into positions and debates around what is the best approach. But I didn't realize there was other treatments being put forward or being, being developed. Is, is, is the Young Street corridor too far advanced to look at some slight treatment of separation, a, a, a small, you know, you know, hump or something that gave it a slight feeling of segregation? Is that, is that...
So, the answer would be it is too far along in the process. The contract is well-advanced. We're going into road construction. We're into, the designs are all complete. So, it would be very expensive for us to consider a change to the design. And it wouldn't be a simple design. You can't just do a slight rise at this particular stage. So, the features that will be on this segment of Young, we do have bike boxes, do we not?
Yeah, we have bike boxes. And if they can add to, we, we do have a segregated bike lane on Y 3.2. So, the bike lane will not be, as you've seen on Highway 7, beside the travel lane. It'll be above the curb and beside the sidewalk for the Y 3.2 segment.
Where's that? Sorry, there?
Just behind the curb. So, the...
The Y, I don't think everybody knows what Y 3.2 is.
The Young Street segment here in New Market.
So, explain again where it will be?
Okay. So, on Highway 7, the bike lane is beside the travel lane.
Yeah, it's right on the road.
So, for the Young Street segment in the Town of New Market, it's not going to be in an on-road facility. It'll actually be in the boulevard. So, beside the, the travel lane, you're going to have your barrier curb. And then there's going to be a separated bike lane that's segregated by the, the curb itself, the barrier curb.
Great. I don't know how I missed that. That's, that's good news. And then the, then, then the sidewalk or...
Yeah. And then there's going to be your planters. And then there's going to be the sidewalk.
Okay. Interesting. Great.
All right.
Can somebody, I probably had it before, but can somebody send me a cross-section of that design again?
Yep. Absolutely.
Thank you. And the last thing I just wanted to raise, and I, I do this with some hesitation because I, I don't typically like to disagree with somebody as well-informed as you, Mary Frances. But I'm going to suggest that, that the traffic, it was being referred to earlier, in north Young Street and the congestion that's there, you know, is, I think, as you said, is always going to be there. It's always going to be an issue, at least until the widen of Young Street North coming up. But actually, I think some, there's an opportunity here. And the reason I'm raising is because it's an actual opportunity. But on the 16th of this month, very soon, the Bathurst Street extension is opening. I actually believe we're going to, a rare case of where you're going to see an actual lifting of traffic off of Young Street North. I think it's going to be that significant, certainly out, over time as people become more aware of it. So, I'm, I'm very hopeful about that impact. But the reason I raise it is because I think it might be an opportunity. And I was wondering if you would consider a Viva as part of their project, about looking at the potential for directing traffic, even starting out at St. John's possibly, now that that's going to be opening, to start looking at Bathurst as a way to get across, right? Because even, even if you're, it's going to be quicker for some people, even if they're coming back to, to, let's say they're going to Green Lane to big box stores or they're going to the mall. In some cases, depending where you're starting, you're going to be quicker to go off used Bathurst and come back. And with the Bathurst extension, the ability to go all the way through to Bradford now.
Yes.
That we, we, I think we really need, whether it's Viva or whether it's the region or a, a joint effort, the more we can start to make sure that everybody is quickly aware that that option is there, I think benefits everybody.
Yes. And, and I, and as a longtime resident of north part of Aurora, every group... Yes, and, and I, and as a longtime resident of north part of Aurora, every group that you can imagine, you know, we, we do, we do follow, like Bathurst to go to, you know, the big box is the only way to go on a Saturday.
Right.
You're not going up Young Street for sure, even avoid Eagle on Saturday, because sometimes you can't get the Eagle, right? So, so, you know, we're happy to take the communication back and work with Transportation Services and our team to just make sure that people are aware with, with that opening, that it might just really do create that extra relief that's needed. Still think it's going to be a really busy place.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a successful...
It'll be very busy, yeah.
It's still going to be a busy place to get to, for sure, on a Saturday, on Young Street, but, but we, we'll be happy to help, you know, make sure people are aware.
I might be overly optimistic, but I, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to see some, some noticeable relief for a while, at least, and then carries us through to 2020 when we do the, the widening of Young Street North.
Yes, yes.
But I think it's partially going to be, to what degree we can make as many people aware that it's a viable, for those, that it's an option.
Absolutely.
So if, if we can start to look at that, that'd be fantastic, but...
We'll do that.
Also, just for, for those that are here or, or watching, that, that's, I believe, is opening on the sixteenth, and it's on top of being a, a much quicker route to, to South Simcoe, it's, it's supposed to be spectacularly a beautiful stretch of roadway.
Beautiful. It is a beautiful part of the, the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The good news is, is that with the Young Street North extensions, that we, we had the rational thinking to make sure that we finish Young Street South down before we, and I think Young Street North is two thousand and eighteen, two thou, Mr. Noem, is it eighteen? Eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah, I think it's twenty.
Even twenty, okay. So we'll have the, the one project done before we get into, into the disruption of the second one. Well, I do have to say, and I've bragged about it many times on Davis Drive, the responsiveness of the VIVA Rapid Next Group has been outstanding, even to the point where you were standing in the backyards of some bait, some, some properties on Davis Drive when people were concerned about the shifting soil. And the same thing has happened with Sophia, when we've had some concerns with some of the, the businesses. So the responsiveness of the team has been outstanding, and I want to thank you for that. I think you've done a great job there, and actually, members of council may or may not have been involved in the Davis Drive selfie contest, but maybe if we could do something like that. I don't know how many politicians could give up an opportunity for a selfie contest, but there might be some ways for us to be engaged in, in letting the community know. I do know that we distributed by hand letters talking about the claim process along Davis Drive, and something similar to that might be, might be helpful as well, but, but if we can be part of the success of the project, we'd certainly be happy to, to participate on that. And again, we thank you very much for the responsiveness that we've received when this very substantial project has been undertaken.
Well, and we, we very much appreciate your ongoing support. We know that you take many phone calls with respect to the congestion and the impact of the project, but it really has been a team effort all around, with your senior staff and with yourself, to, to come through, and, and we are very proud of the transformation that's happened on Davis Drive and the stage it's set for, for the new growth, and, and it's just so heartening to see people walking up and down the corridor in such greater numbers, and being comfortable in their wheelchairs and on bicycles and all the different things that are going on in the corridor. So thank you, to you, for understanding. It was probably one of our most complicated of the corridors that we're currently undertaking, although young south of, of New Market might be competing with you now, but, but it, it was a very complex undertaking, and loss of history was uncovered that had to be dealt with, but we are proud that it's now been put back together, and we thank you for your ongoing support, and, and do offer that the whole team is, is very committed and passionate about supporting you and making sure that if there are questions in your community, that we're there to help you in any way we can, address questions and concerns, so thank you again.
Thank you. Motion received, the presentation. Counselor Hampton, Counselor Broom, all those in favor. That is Carrie, thank you very much. Our next presentation is Mike Rabo from, and, and Mr. Shu He from York Region. They're going to bring us an update on the Upper York Sewage Solutions Project. I understand twenty minutes is, is all we needed, so could I have a motion up front just to Counselor Twinn, Counselor Kerwin, that we extend the presentation time to twenty minutes? All those in favor? That is Carrie, thank you. Who's going to lead?
Peter, am I, am I good to go? Thank you, Peter. Through you, Mayor, members of council, we're very happy to be here today to give you an update on this very significant project. My name is Mike Rabo, I'm with York Region Environmental Services, and this is Shu He, he's one of our engineering managers. He'll be giving the majority of today's presentation in terms of the technical matters of construction that'll be happening here in New Market. So today is, today's presentation is twofold. I want to give a very brief update on the Upper York Individual Environmental Assessment, give you status to date and where we're hurting, heading in terms of this approval, and very...
You're going to say Freudian slip, where we're hurting.
That's right, hurting, hurting people, critical for the, the future development here in, in New Market. And I think more critical for today is an update on the York Durham Sewage System Force Main twinning through New Market. That'll start in 2017, critical construction years in eighteen and nineteen. Being a resident of New Market, it's going to come through some significant areas, so we want to make sure we're doing our best, working with your staff to, to manage this project going forward. So just turning to the individual environmental assessment quickly, the main reason for this EA was to look at servicing in the future for Aurora, New Market, and East Gwilynberry. Probably the most significant piece of this project and EA was East Gwilynberry. They're looking at servicing a population of over ninety thousand people, but also very critical, New Market, just short of thirty thousand people, and Aurora of over thirty thousand people. So this is servicing that will go on beyond, beyond 2031, and anticipated growth beyond the current capacity assignment that the region's already, already given to you. So this IEA began back in two thousand and nine. I believe at the time when we kicked it off, we probably planned on building a large tunneled sewer through the Oak Ridge and Maraine, leveraging our Duffin Creek Plant down in Durham Region, and based on the Lake Simcoe Protection Plan and no new plants on, on Lake Simcoe, that seemed like where we were heading, just short of a billion-dollar effort that, that would have been. However, working with the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change and going through alternatives, and, you know, and looking for a, a best-of-class facility or solution, we turned our attention to a water reclamation center in East Gwilynberry, along with a few other project components. So we submitted that IEA back in two thousand and fourteen. Earlier this year, in two thousand and sixteen, the ministry filed their government review. We've been going back and forth with them since January, trying to finalize, you know, the final little components and nuances of this, this file, and I, you know, I'm happy to say that we're very close. We anticipate a decision by the end of, of the year, if not very early into 2017, and that'll give us the approval to move forward with, with this project. So more to come on that in 2017. So this project and what we filed in two thousand and fourteen, and the key components are essentially the water reclamation facility, so that will, will be where the sewage is sent, from East Gwilynberry, New Market, and parts of Aurora, some will go down to the York Durham Sewage System. This will be a state-of-the-art facility with membrane and RO treatment, reverse osmosis. There's nothing like it in Canada right now. Also, there's going to be a phosphorus offset program. I talked about the Lake Simcoe Protection Plan and no new plants on the lake, so as part of bringing this new plant online, we need to have a phosphorus offset program, so we're going to be looking at storm management and providing phosphorus reduction through storm management, storm water management in ponds. And the last piece is the twinning of the York Durham Sewage System, the Forest Main Sewer through New Market. Due to the growth and, you know, the added pressure to the system, this is going to provide redundancy. Out of the New Market Pumping Station right now that's in New Market, we only have one pipe coming out, and I think for security purposes and just to provide that backup going forward, we're going to add a, a second pipe, and that is a requirement of this approval. Also, it, it will generate a little bit of capacity for the town, that, that is anticipated for completion in 2019. I think with the current restrictions that you're facing as a municipality and, and further growth, this will provide a little bit of buffer to the 2024 timeline for completion of the, the reclamation center. On that note, I'm going to pass it over to Shu, he's going to give you the fine details of, of what we're doing here.
Thanks, Mike. I'll continue elaborating on the details for these three components. The first is the water reclamation center, which, which will be located on the second street, on the second concession, Queensville, north of Queensville Side Road, in the town of East Gwilynberry. Here is the architecture rendering of the, of the plant, and this is critical piece of infrastructure to support the growth of 2031, and will provide, will use, and the, the state-of-the-art membrane technology to produce clean water for surface discharge as well as water reuse purposes. At the same time, the region is adopting numerous green design features in this, in this plant to ensure the plant is sustainable. The second component, just like Mike explained, and this mainly is the twinning of the existing force main from New Market Pumping Station to Aurora Pumping Station, and also the, the force main from Bogart Creek Pumping Station to the Ferry Lake, also providing the system reliability as, as well as the redundancy, and providing extra capacity for two thousand people, benefiting New Market and East Gwilynberry. The third component consists of, the phosphorus offset program consists of seven existing stormwater ponds, and they're in, located in, in the, in the towns of Aurora, East Gwilynberry, and New Market. And also, we have one low-impact developing site in the town of New Market. We were, we're going to, as part of the program, we're going to develop a new stormwater management pond in, in town of Georgina. The purpose of this program is to provide and to improve the water quality and quantity of downstream water courses that ultimately flow into Lake Simcoe, and generating net benefit to the, to the water shaft. Let's dive into more details of this YSS modification. I'd like to start with a comparison of, of the original EA alignment and the, the current enhanced detailed design alignment. As you can see, the detailed design alignment has significantly reduced the open cut portion from three and a half kilometers to just six hundred fifty meters, in, in an effort to minimize the impact to the community. As a result, the entire project will be done mainly by trenchless construction, meaning the micro tunneling construction. I'd like to use Google Earth flyover to demonstrate the overall design. This flyover is created from Aurora Pumping Station to New Market Pumping Station. The white line is the existing force main, the yellow line is the new force main, the yellow block you see is the construction compound by design. The orange block is the, is a provisional shaft, a compound, just for contingency, in case we need it. We're approaching Mulock Drive, there's a provisional shaft just north of Mulock Drive. King Park Way, there is a construction compound and provisional compound. We're going into Ferry Lake, there is construction compound at the, at the Ferry Lake, on other side, side that is compound on the Carter Street. There's water street and compound just at the place station. Another provisional shaft at the All Our Kids Playground. Construction, construction compound at the Queen, Queen Street and the Charleston Street. Another one at the Davis Drive. The alignment follows Bayview Parkway all the way to the end of, to the north, north part of Medicine, Medicine Greenhouse, beside the George Richardson Park. The last construction compound is that, at that existing New Market Pumping Station. Start at, start at the Ferry Lake, the Bogart Creek enforcement runs along First, First Street and Pearson Street. The construction of this pipe will be mainly open cut. That's the flyover. So in summary, this project features five kilometers of trenchless construction and six hundred fifty meters open cut construction, ten micro tunneling compounds, and three railway crossings and sixteen water crossings. As we stand, we are still at the detailed design stage. To date, we have completed the most of the field investigation, or we're at the stage of property acquisition and permit consulting, application. So let's look into the, the two construction methods we, we, that will be used for this project. The first is open cut. Open cut construction requires trench excavation to install pipes. It has more surface impact, such as traffic impact to the community. On the other hand, micro tunneling is a for, is a form of trenchless construction, using remote-controlled micro tunneling machine to install pipes. It has minimum impact, surface impact to the community and the, just the environment. At a certain distance, it does require construction compounds to, for sanding and receiving purposes. Here's the typical micro tunneling compound, construction compound layout. What's underground is the micro tunneling boring, boring machine, followed by segments of, of jacking pipe, and what's above ground is the, is a supporting system to enable a micro tunneling operation, including a crane, operator cabin, generator, auxiliary separation plant. Of course, there is a space for pipe storage. I had, I, in my previous submission of this, this presentation, I had a number, a few slides to give you more details of the compounds. In, in the interest of time, I pushed it down to the end of the presentation, we can always come back to, to, to look at the, to review the details. Here, by design, the project team will minimize the impact to the community through careful planning and stringent, stringent contract requirements. We, we add the, the potential impacts and the mitigation measures. So in terms of the construction access and egress, we will make sure there will be flagmen to coordinate the access and egress and egress at all construction compounds. We will develop a project-specific traffic management plan for this project to ensure, to ensure all the safety provisions and detours are implemented during construction. Other provisions also include, include a scheduling material delivery of peak hours, minimize the volume of the construction traffic. In terms of noise and vibration, we will implement noise attenuation system at each construction compound, with the stringent specification requirements for, for the equipment. At the same time, we will implement and, and maintain a moist, a noise and vibration program, monitoring program through the course of construction. We will avoid sidewalks and trails wherever possible, and provide detours where necessary with the safety provisions, such as light, temporary lighting and signal crossing. We will avoid the existing parking slots. In terms of the community events, we will work with the town staff to plan the construction activity around the major events, and provide proactive communication to the residents and the users. The three parties, the town, RSC, and the region, we all share the same vision, that this project can be a great opportunity for collaboration and partnership among different levels of government and regulatory agencies. So for this very reason, we have established a project-specific Working Together Committee, supported by a number of working groups with the staff from the three parties, starting with Peter, Rachel, and Antonette, a number of, and the town's senior, senior staff on the committee, and their leadership and collaboration are really appreciated by the So under the leadership of the committee, the, the project team is taking, is taking a proactive approach to the project communication. To date, we have developed a comprehensive communication plan for this project, using numerous, numerous communication tools, such as notification signs, notification letters, public open house, and the social media, you name it. We're committed to high-level sta, highest standards of customer service. Where necessary, we meet the customer in person, or we go door-to... Where necessary, we meet the customer in person, or we go door to door to explain and hear and, and hear and address that concern. So the project timeline, the design and construction of all three components of this project hinges on the IE approval, just Mike explained, and which is anticipated by end of 2016. With all the permits and properties secured by, by early 2017, that the tender and the construction phase of this YDS mod component will start May 2017. We anticipate the commission of the YDS modification component would be by end of 2019. Other components such as WRC and the TP offset work will, will follow shortly after. The, we, we are planning to commission the WRC by the end, by end of 2024. Next steps, we're going to continually work through the committee to address all the technical comments, apply for the permits and noise by law exemptions from the town. We, we will work through the committee to finalize the storm, stormwater management ponds and associated maintenance agreement for the TP offset program. We'll come back to the council to update you on the, on this project when the year is approved and the design is, is complete before construction. We'll continually develop and implement the project and the communication program and provide customer service as we proceed. Thank you.
I have a number of questions.
Yeah.
Counselor Hampton, then Counselor Twining, and Regional Counselor Taylor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. It was very, very interesting. Newmarket is constrained by our growth in the future by wastewater, wastewater treatment facility. And I was wondering, when this wastewater treatment facility is completed, what will be the capacity for the area that it will serve? I, I saw a number of 20,000, but I'm not sure if that was the right number, or...
And just specifically, are you referring to Newmarket alone, or?
No, for the area, the full area that it will serve, all of East Glinbury, north, total capacity.
So I believe, I believe it supports just short of 150,000 people.
150,000 people, thank you. Has the, the region has approved this and set aside funds, or has committed to provide the funds to build this facility? Has it been budgeted for 100% already, or can you give me an explanation on that?
So this project is in our current 10-year capital plan. The 10-year capital plan is funded through development charges. So right now, in terms of a fiscal strategy, we have seen the date of this, this project pushed out. One time it was 2018, there were discussions of 2022. The current completion date is 2024. Now, this does anticipate that development charges do come in as anticipated for capacity that's out in the system. Right now, in the York region system, there is available capacity of about 175,000 people. And this has been created by debt infrastructure funding for new infrastructure, like our Duffin Creek Plant, Southeast Collector. So all this investment has created the debt, so now we need to recover that, that revenue to pay back the debt in order to put us in a fiscal state that we can afford to build this plant and further recover. But it is a fully DC funded, development charge funded project.
So when, as a municipality, when will we see that the, the region is actually committed to providing the funds 100%? So I understand, you know, you have a financial strategy of collecting DCs to cover the costs of the Weston Creek, and then I guess the, the idea is that we'll be going into further debt to build this, which we, we do need this facility, I do know, I realize that. So when do you feel that council, regional council approve the funding and actually make the commitment to create a debenture to create this facility?
So it's a, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to answer that question because I think the answer, i- it's on an iterative basis. And I mean, annually, we go back and we approve our budgets. Our budget is approved with an annual budget and capital spending authority, so that gives you the authorization to award contracts. But year to year, based on the forecasted revenues on development charges, we need to see if that gets trued up and the revenues are indeed what we anticipated. So that feeds into kind of the fiscal model. I would suggest, however, that there will be a point in time in the next five years, I'd say maybe in the last four years, where a commitment to that completion date needs to be brought forward. However, from an affordability standpoint, it is, it is, its destiny is based on what gets built now and what's already approved for development in all our municipalities.
Okay, thank you. It'll be interesting to see as the region has discussions with regional council on to annually as to the funding possibilities, and hopefully it comes sooner than later. And I was wondering if there's been any kind of an estimate based on a 2024 completion date of a, a cost of building this facility?
The current, in our 2016 approved budget, the current overall project estimate is 600, just plus of 630 million. Through, I think, through 2016, there has been some detailed design done. That might increase by, I think it's in the range of 40 to 50 million, based on some geotechnical work that we've been doing. So our, our 2017 budget has not been approved yet, but we could see numbers in the range of 680 million for the entire project.
Thank you very much for the information. I look forward to seeing you gentlemen again and getting updates for this facility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Twining.
Thank you, thank you for this update on the, on the project. My questions are with regards to Twining. I mean, I, my area is, part of it is the Bayview Pumping Station and Down Bayview. So lots of residents are asking me about what's going on with this, so I appreciate the update so I can pass it along. But just so that I have the correct information, so I know exactly, sort of familiar what's going on. It looks like the start of the project for the Twining is going to be, what is it? Is it 2017, late, and then two years? Is that what the project timeframe is basically? Q3 2017 to Q4 2019? So basically, two years.
Yeah, based on approval of the IEA, we do anticipate completion today at the end of 2019. That's our objective.
Okay, for the Twining portion of it.
For the Twining, for the sewer portion, yes.
Okay, and how does, and what's the process? Are you, do you start at the south end in Aurora and then, and then just basically move yourself along? Is it done at the same time? How, how does it come, how does it all play out?
I'm going to allow Shu to answer that based on just the logistics.
Yeah, this is the entire construction package. When we awarded the project, it's purely up to the contractor to schedule that work. However, we know, we will know beforehand. Yeah.
So you don't really know at this point how it's going to sort of play out?
Yes, yeah. This is premature for us to know where to, where they, they're going to start.
Okay, and, and it looks like, I mean, the majority of it is all tunneling, except for that portion from the Bogart Pumping Station that attaches into the, the other line, not, it's going to be open, but the rest is all underground. And you talk about noises, is it, I mean, I'm not familiar with this, you know, type of construction. What can we expect to anticipate in the way of vibrations, noise, et cetera? Is it something that's going to be only done during the day? Is it going to be 24 hours? Again, you may not know that because it could be up to the...
I can speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, in terms of, the, the construction compound will be, will be, will be, and fans and with the hoarding, higher hoarding, and we call it attenuation, we, we, we're going to use heavy duty hoarding. We call it a noise attenuation wall. And in terms of the construction noise, basically, that's the noise of, of dump truck. That's what they use back and forth to transport to the, the dirt.
So the hoarding you're talking about is just... The hoarding is just around those, those compound areas that you've sort of mentioned often, then, but the line part, you...
The line, it's, you don't hear anything.
Really?
Yeah, nothing, so it's 10 meters into the ground. You don't hear anything. In terms of vibration, the vibration is very minor, very minor. Of course, we will have monitoring program to sure, to make sure the vibration and is within allowable period.
Yeah. I would just suggest that we do a lot of projects like this, and we do get a lot of different feedback. So I think as, as Shu has said, we'll be doing a lot of ground monitoring in terms of any vibrations, we'll be doing noise monitoring, we'll be doing precondition assessments and postcondition assessments to see if there's any change. Because a lot of things can happen during construction of these, these types, whether, you know, it's perceived or it's actual, it's just a lot of things come up. So we're diligent in the way we monitor and, and see what's going on pre-construction, during, and then afterwards.
Right.
As it relates to, like I said, vibration, you know, issues and, and noise.
And then just a couple, just sorry, a couple of follow-up questions as well. With regards to these construction area sites, you know, I mean, some of them look quite large, you know, I mean, and some of them are in our parks and that area. What, and then you obviously would return the areas, like, because obviously they're going to be pretty beat up, I'm sure, after, after the project's done, are they, you will be, this is part of the budget, will be returning them back to, you know, a good condition in that area?
Absolutely, our mandate is, as is or better, and certainly areas will be fully retrofitted and brought back to existing state or better.
Right, right. And just one more question, sorry, one more. You talked about some new stormwater ponds, and some of them are located in the town of Newmarket. Are these brand new ones or existing ones, or are they, do we, you couldn't really tell from the map where they are? They, have they already been identified and can we get that information?
Yeah, we had, we proposed a number of stormwater management ponds in the original EA, and yeah, they are all existing ponds.
Oh, okay.
Currently, we're with, with, working with the town staff to finalize and which pond we are going to do the work. We're still at, because of the uncertainty of the EA, and we, we kind of put on a little hold on this aspect of the work.
Okay, okay.
We, we are, pretty soon, we will engage a discussion with the, with the town engineering staff.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Regional Counselor.
Thanks very much. Couple, a couple of points, a couple of questions. One, I just want to revisit the funding issue and the funding commitment. I understand what Mike's saying about, we always have to be cognizant that depending on development charges and the flow of that dollars, that revisit the capital plan constantly. But, I mean, as far as the commitment for any project would go, at this point, this early, in, in, before the project, the commitment is as firm as anything else is. It's, it's, it's in the tenure plan. Council's actually started flowing money already. I, I, do you recall how much money has already been?
Yeah, through the mayor, the, our investment to date is over 48 million.
Right, so.
The EA was 26 million alone.
So a considerable amount of money has been flowed already, it's in the tenure plan, and I think what's being referred to by Mike is that, like any projects, we, if all of a sudden, to put it bluntly, development charges drop off significantly, you have to revisit the capital plan, and that, that wouldn't be just this project, it could be other projects. So, but other than that, regional council is committed to moving this project forward, they're committed to the date of 2024. But like all projects, we have to be cognizant of, of development charge collection. But otherwise, you know, the money started flowing for all the pre-work, it's in the tenure capital plan, and they're doing everything they have to do to, to move towards that, including hopefully any day now, getting the, the individual environmental assessment approval. But I, I just want to make sure it's, 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 it's in no more, it's as certain and as committed to as any other major project in the tenure capital plan. And I think that's fair to say, would it not be?
Counselor, that is absolutely perfect, that's probably should have, how I should have put in it, but yeah. And, and we continue to invest all property, everything. Our council has mandated go forward, get it to a tender ready state, and even the 2024 timeline is still, you know, very early in, in the, in the, in the future in terms of getting a project like this done. So full, full steam ahead.
Yeah, I have the, the other thing I just want to say is that not only is this project incredibly important in terms of managing and planning ahead and managing growth as it comes, and we need to do that, but it's, I think the other part, and I think it was well highlighted in the presentation, but this is also about redundancy in the system, and it's incredibly important, I think, for the system to have this redundancy from a, from an operational perspective and a safety perspective, and an environmental perspective. So to twin this pipe is more than just managing growth, it's about doing the responsible thing in terms of the infrastructure. I also just want to say that there's, there's been, and I don't know if it was mentioned, but there's been a, a pilot test of this system of, now I'm talking about the Upper York Sewer Solution itself, the big project, the 650 million dollar project, it's been a, I don't know if it's still running, but there was, for a year or two, they ran a, a test site that operated ostensibly much like the, the site would, and I visited it myself. And in terms of the water that's going to be released into, into the Holland, Holland East and up into Lake Simcoe, I can tell you, I went up and saw this, and if anything, if there's any issue, it's that the water's too clean. You, you could literally, through three feet of water, you could read a book. I mean, that's how clean it comes out of, of the, of the process. So it's, it's been tested, it's been looked at, it's state of the art, it's said it's a leading example in North America. Now, if I can, I just want to turn briefly to what Counselor Twining was talking about, which is the project itself, the, the Twining. This is, we've known this is coming for a while. I, I know it wasn't a small project for a while, but I think today I really got a sense of, sort of held my breath a couple of times, this is another big one coming like Viva, and it, this is not going to be without impact. I mean, we've done a lot to move it towards almost all tunneling now, which is going to lessen the impact, but it's still a very significant project. And in terms of managing that impact, to Counselor Twining's questions, I guess, I understand that until the contracts let, because whoever's doing the contract will talk about logistically and operationally how it can be done. I assume we put some parameters into that contract about how, our expectations about how it'll be done. So my question is, and I understand it depends on expense or the impact of expense, but like Counselor Twining's wondering, I'm wondering, like, you know, do you have one or two, I forget what they're called, but the, the pits where you access before you tunnel again, do you have one or two of those running for a year before you open two more? And if you don't, aren't sure about that now, I guess my, one of my biggest questions would be particularly when it comes to Ferry Lake and the Riverwalk Commons area, is, is there some, already some thought being put into trying to work with the contractor to stage it in a way that that could be avoiding that sort of crucial June, July, August, maybe even September period? Is there a way to do? And, and, and if the answer is it's too early to know, are you at least have that on your radar, that that's a very, very active center in the summer months with activities, festivals, communities, farmers market, et cetera, et cetera? And to the degree to which we can try to stage it and phase it in a way that lessens or avoids the impact during those crucial months?
Absolutely, Counselor. First off, all the compounds are strategically located, as, as we, you can appreciate it from the flyover. We try to, by selecting the compounds, we, location of the compound, we try to minimize the impact naturally. And in terms of the, the, how we package and the schedule the work, definitely I have a big list of the towns' events, and we will work with the towns' staff to carefully to either schedule or put constraints to the, to the contract, to make sure we, we, we work around the events.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm, I'll leave it here because I know there's other speakers, but I guess what I'm hoping is not only are we looking and saying, well, perhaps they can, you know, there's a big event coming up, you know, Canada Day, we'll shut down or stop for that period of time. What I'm wondering is if, if we can at least look at the phasing to the degree where we maybe even avoid opening the nearest one or the nearest two until right at the end of the season or try to get it closed before the beginning of the season. I know so little about this, I don't know how realistic that is, I'm just asking that we, we try to look at not just sort of avoiding key dates, but actually avoiding impact during those key months, if that's doable at all.
I, I think the answer is absolutely. The working committee that's been developed is for this strict reason. We know the alignment of this pipe is to very, very, since, you know, high sensitivity areas in terms of community events and just the public in general. That's why we're here today, well in advance of construction. We wanted the opportunity to get it all out on the table, so everyone understands the impacts that are coming forward and that your staff can work with, with us to call it out. And I don't think we want to give any sort of perception that we kind of just pass this over to our contractor and they come in and decide what's happening. We have full control of where they're going to be, when they're going to be there, how they're going to do things, and that's how we set up our contract. We do try them, to try to give them flexibility, they, they are professionals at what they do, and they do understand construction very well. So we try to give them flexibility in where they can be and how they can schedule things, but there's some hard parameters that we put in there that they have, it's, it's all or nothing in terms of those, those hard requirements.
So it's not the first time I've ever said my last question, and it wasn't true, so... But the, the last thing I actually want to, and if it's later, if we're getting more from the committee, the town staff, ourselves, if it's, if it's a later update, but are we going to get, I think this warrants something on the, I mean, the scale of, not quite, but the, the Viva Davis Drive, are we going to have a communications plan? And when will council get to see that, that speaks to how we're going to, A, begin to inform and then continue to inform the residents? And I, I think, you know, having a discussion like this and putting an ad in the paper for something that's potentially this impactful isn't, isn't, it's going to require more than that, and so I'm wondering when we might find out more about that. And I will turn off my mic.
Do you want to answer that, Shu?
Yeah, yeah, we have a comprehensive communication plan for this project. Actually, based on the plan, we are, we are communicating to the, to the communities, such as, and the notifications, letters of the community during the investigation. And we will, we will work with the, the town staff knows better than, than the region in terms of the, the needs from the, from the, from the community. We, we will continually work with the town staff to understand what are the challenges we... staff to understand what are the challenges we, then we communicate accordingly. Yeah.
I'd just like to say at the end, perhaps at the end, or if you think it's Mr. Mayor's under a new business, but I'd actually like to go as far as saying that, I'd, I'd like that, a, a, that or an A communication plan to come back to council.
So just a note, and the other thing I've, we've committed to your staff is that we will come back again to committee or council to present before we go to construction, to give you a more, you know, finely detailed update as to what's happening, the progress the committee's made. So that's another piece. And perhaps at that time, we can bring forward that communication plan, if that's some sort of resolution you want to pass for next year.
Thank you. Councillor Kirwan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some councillors are, are going to be very busy. And Bob Quappis, welcome. I see most of that line goes through Ward Five. However, I really like to thank our deputy mayor, John Taylor, for some heads up with regard to the Bogart Creek Sewage Pumping Station. It's going to be, as I see, basically open cut. That's a tricky part of the world there. Pearson, Court, Hamilton. And actually, the people on Barrington who front Pearson were about to repave their driveways. And here we're going to have open cut come all the way from that pumping station, which is at the eastern end of Pearson. And it's a tricky area because you can only come in and go east as far as the divider there, and then you have to go down Court, the same way coming up from Hamilton. It's basically a one-way street where it gets out. So it's going to be some tricky construction. But these people need to be informed now, right now, because they were in the process of upgrading their places. And that's going to be some heavy construction there for at least a year, maybe two years. And as I say, you just did some upgrades to that pumping station with regard to the smell alleviation there. So I want to be personally involved. And if I need to hand-deliver flyers or circulations to keep these people informed, I, I want to do that. It, it's only fair because it's open cut. And that's a very tricky area because it's in a low-lying area where the smell was just mitigated within the last two years. So as I say, Jane Twinni to the north, and he's going to be busy. I know I'm going to be busy. Poor old Bob, I don't think he knew what hit him today until he saw this project. But we're all going to be busy because it's not just the York-Durham system and so forth. It's everything else we're faced with. Mr. Quappis is going to be faced with the clock tower and with Eagle Street. And I'm faced with, at the same time, I've got the thirty-million-expansion of Pickering College right in that area, which is on Prospect Street, and the medical center on Mulock Court. And I've got seven infills. So please work with councillor Kirwan in, in Ward Two because it's, I want those residents informed and informed now. Okay? And thank you, John. We picked this up and we might have prevented people going ahead and we might have saved them a lot of money.
I just heard you off to dig the trench, didn't you?
No, I did that in, no, I did that in World War I, you know, I was active then. So I'm used to digging trenches, okay? So I've been around that long. So thank, thank you so much. This is, you know, every time I, when I saw the agenda today, here we have Mary Frances Turner with Viva and, and the York Region System Transit. And it's a learning curve. I, I wish I had courses like this when I went to university, something practical. All the best to you. But I look forward to working with you. It's a massive project.
Maybe once, once we establish the task force, the, we could let the members of the task force know if there's any issues or concerns that have surfaced throughout the process. So that we could set up some communications to make sure that that feedback could come back into the committee. So, so that would be good. Okay, I have councillors Hempen, Bezance, and Brew. Councillor Hempen.
Thank you. Just one quick question again. I meant to ask you, on the pumping station to the, the north, the area that I represent is just to the west of it and a little northwest. I'm wondering, what's going to happen? Because it kind of, your overhead shot, Google overhead view kind of ended at that pumping station. Can you explain what's going to happen just north of there?
At the, at the Newmarket Pumping Station?
Yes.
Yeah, basically, we will turn, we will, micro tunneling will all the way go to the pumping station. The work, we, the work is only limited at the pumping station. We just do the connection at the pumping station.
So there's further trenching and further piping going north as well, or no, is that right there?
That's already been installed. I think over the last few years, you've experienced the construction through there. And that's part of all the servicing that went in, up a second concession in East Gwillingbury. So that flow's coming south now through the Newmarket Station. And once that new facility's built, it'll revert north and go to that, that station.
That's great. And I'm glad to hear that the, the funding is secured as, as, as much as any other ten-year project through DC. So I appreciate the regional councillor making those comments.
Thank you. Councillor Bezance.
Thank you. I have just two questions. A lot of my questions have already been, been addressed. But with respect to the, the proposed phosphorus offsets and the retrofitting of the stormwater management ponds, looking on page twenty-three of your, your deck, you've got a star sort of, and I'm assuming that's in the area of where the existing Glenway ponds are. So I think there's about nine ponds that, that are part of the, the integrated stormwater management system.
Yes.
Currently, about five of them are, are being retrofitted to bring them up to current environmental standards as part of the, the development for the new homes. So that, that I would assume is something that's being taken care of by, by other funding and by the developer in that area? Or is this part of your plan as well for, for those ponds to then fit into, to the overall plan for what you're doing upstream or downstream? I don't know which stream it is that, that goes from those ponds. But, so is that part of the work that they're currently doing on those ponds, part of what, what your overall plan is contemplating, or is quite separate from?
No, that's a, that's a separate initiative, yeah.
But will it still, will all of that work that's being done still complement what, what you're planning, or?
We have to look at the, currently, the, the five ponds within the, the town of Newmarket is, is, it's, it's tentative. And we proposed it, we went through the exercise, we proposed it. And we are at the stage to sit down with the town staff to see what have, what have been done, and what's left, what opportunity left for the region. We are at that stage.
Okay, so you're not, you're not looking at any of that, that work other than to, in the context of what's already been done? And does it, does it fit? Or, because it, you know, I would just hate to have to see a situation where, where you go back and you say, oops, sorry, we have to do more work on those ponds to fit into this plan?
So just two components to this. I mean, with the standards they're meeting to develop and build those new ponds, we can't go in now and claim for the offsets for what they've completed. So we're trying to create a net benefit. So anything they've achieved through that construction, we won't go in and try and claim that or take advantage of it, although it would be nice. The other piece is, there's going to be no lost cost. So if they're building something, we're not going to come in and rip it out. You know, if they're meeting new standards and requirements, there should be fairly robust ponds and, and performing quite well. If there's opportunities for us to upgrade, I mean, there's, there's things called quantitative ponds and qualitative ponds in the sense of, some are just for volume, to store as much as possible, and then some are for treatment capacity. So you're trying to remove things and get things out of them. And we're, we're looking for really qualitative ponds that we're trying to take the phosphorus out. And you do that by settling. You settle it out, and then you take the sludge and, and dispose of it. So that's the kind of effect we're trying to create. So once we're in a position to do so with town staff, we'll establish where those best opportunities lie, maybe some ponds that are further degraded and have the best impact for us to get the most removal opportunity to create that offset.
Okay. And then my second question relates more to the, the noise and vibration monitoring. And I believe that our noise bylaw is very specific in terms of, of what the, the maximum limit is before, before, I guess, we would come in and request a work stoppage or whatever. But is there, is there currently a similar standard for vibrations that, that you follow? Is it like a ministry of the environment standard? Or like, how would you know at what point you've gone beyond what is reasonably tolerable for residents in the surrounding area? Because, you know, looking at your map, there's a few sections where you're, you're going pretty close to, as, as councillor Kirwan said, you know, you're going close to existing homes. And, you know, at what point is, is a vibration not acceptable or, or one that you would remediate? Because, you know, do we wait for, you know, pictures to fall off walls before we say, oops, that's, that's gone too far? Or, you know, is there, is there some standard? And, you know, it's one thing to monitor, but at what point do you, do you know that, that it's, it's too much and, and intolerable? And will residents be informed of that, too? That, you know, here's, here's what you can do to prepare, obviously, for, for vibrations, but also what you might want to be considering in looking at your foundations? Some of those homes are, are older homes, you know, the, at what point is the vibration tolerable for their foundations? What they should, they, what should they be looking for and so forth?
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, the, first off, all the province has the standards for, for permanent establishment. For example, we install AC equipment, we have limits for AC equipment. There is, the province has no standards for permanent, for temporary foundations, meaning the, the noise vibration during construction. However, this is not the first micro tunneling project we do and in the industry. And even the York Region, we've been doing the micro tunneling for many, many, at many, many locations. We, we will use the best practice of the industry. And the, the engineering team will do the comprehensive analysis and modeling to make sure this is within the reasonable, reasonable and range of, of noise and vibration. Speak of vibration, and it's not, it's that you won't fail it, you won't fail it. And, and just, it's a ten meters, ten meters in the ground, and only, it's a very minor vibration. I don't, yeah, yeah, we, yeah. Well, and on top of that, we will have very comprehen, a, a very comprehensive pre-construction and post-construction and survey. And we go to, into, identify the areas in the, in the, within the influence zone. We go to people's houses, we, we take photos, we document what they are doing construction. Region has a very comprehensive insurance policy and, and to, and to handle the, all the, the concerns and the claims. To date, the region has been doing, and many, micro tunneling projects. And we haven't really received any legitimate claim for, from the damage of micro tunneling. Again, this, the technology we're using is really state, the state-of-the-art technology. And yeah, it works very quietly. And we have a noise attenuation compound, and everything will work and, within the compound. At night, at night, in terms of noise bylaw, and at night, definitely, we don't allow the trucking and out. We just allow, because the, the, why we ask for that in the future, and is that, once we start the tunneling, we don't want to stop it. Hope, yeah, because it will seal the operation, right? And so we, we want to, we want to give the contractor this flexibility for them to continue work. And however, all the provisions work, the monitoring, the pre- and post-construction survey, with our engineer will keep eyes on the, on the numbers.
And just, just to add to Shu's response, depending on anywhere we are tunneling, wherever the regulating, regulating body is in that area will have metrics in terms of what you can do for vibration. Obviously, it's more stringent around railways, MTO or Metrolinks may have really stringent requirements. I'm sure the town does have some bylaw information around vibrations, but we can confirm that. A good experience we've just been through is, is in East Gwillingbury. We've done a lot of micro tunneling for the, the second concession infrastructure we put in, up through Sharon. And, and I'll be honest, I mean, there was, there was times where we were coming to council or committee in, in East Gwillingbury early in the week saying, look, we're, we're doing a run here, we've had a delay. You know, Thursday night, we're going to be going all night, if that's okay, and, and you understand? And we, we'd had, we had those resolutions passed and we were able to go forward. And again, no complaints, but it was very close communication and understanding and monitoring that got us, gets us through that construction. So I think, I think that you will hear from us if there's vibration issues, noise issues, and there'll be ongoing discussion with your staff. And if need be, we'll be here talking to you. We don't mind doing so on a regular basis through construction. That's one thing we've certainly done up in East Gwillingbury. We try to provide a high level of service in terms of staff contact from York Region. And if you need us here talking about some of the things that are going on, we are willing to do that, especially if there's implications to your residents.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Brew.
Thank you. Thank you very much, too, for that question. If a resident were to be watching the live stream right now and wanted to learn where we're at as of today, where would be the best place for them to do that?
So the, the, the information to the, to the community, right?
Mm-hmm.
And as we, as we stand today, we try, we still try to finalize the design. I believe as, of course, it's part of the communication plan. It's, for me, it's a little premature communicated to the, to the community at this moment for the details. And, but I'm willing to work with the, the town staff.
Yeah, I think if any resident's looking for a contact, is there a contact?
Yeah, just put my name, yeah, I'm, I'm the contact.
Okay, okay, thank you. And just regarding deputy mayor's earlier comments, I would support us having us come back to committee and having us look at that communications plan to make sure that, that we're in the loop and that we're able to let residents know and, and help you let residents know as well. Because as I said, if someone were watching this right now, they wouldn't be able to find anything other than what they're hearing. And, you know, to councillor Kirwan's point, I think it's something that they should probably be aware of sooner than later. Thank you.
I think just, sorry to add on here, just, I think I'll make sure that we have the appropriate contact information with Peter and his staff. So just, just in the case that they're not getting it today, either the names, you know, were available on our email addresses through York Region, but, and there's, there's also going to be more formal points of contact and emails made available. We'll make sure that we have that information accurately captured with you today.
And, and also, I mean, deputy mayor mentioned some excellent good news stories as well. So I think it's important that the residents know, you know, what's coming and, and, you know, the good parts of it as well.
Now, the other good news is these, not only are these committee meetings streamed, but they're also archived. So there's access to these committee meetings. So the presentation that you've made will be available through the committee streaming as well. Regional councillor?
I just want to, just want to clarify because for, for people who do tune in or check this out later, or are watching now, as you said, we've done, the region's done numerous micro tunneling projects before. And to the best of your knowledge, we haven't had issues with foundation disruption of other homes or significant issues with vibration complaints. And we don't anticipate anything significant in this area. I mean, it's, it's something we monitor, but it's not, I, I just wouldn't want to leave people with the impression that there's this giant vibration machine coming through and that they're, you know, their, their basements are in trouble or anything. I mean, we haven't had significant issues in this area, have we?
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Frankly, we receive claims from time to time.
Yeah.
But we have a pre-construction survey and post-construction survey. We want, we present it to the, to the residents and as you hear, that we don't think is caused by, by our own construction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There being no further questions. I only have one question. There's not the possibility that you'd have two pits going at the same time? Or like, will it go sequentially? Or would you have a concurrent, concurrent construction sites? Or is that established?
We, for micro tunneling, for micro tunneling, we are asking in, in, in the interest of time, because we have to, this is a five or six kilometers of micro tunneling operation. And in order for us to complete the work and the construction in two years, we are requiring two crews, two construction crews. Basically, at minimum, you see two construction compounds working.
Okay, okay. So my concern was, for example, if we had the, the Ferry Lake compound and the regional police compound at the same time, that could have some pretty significant items. And if it's unavoidable, it's unavoidable. And what I'll do is I'll rely on staff to, to make sure that the proper feedback comes into the, the committee, the working group, that we minimize the impact. the committee, the working group, that we minimize the impact in any one area. So that's good. Okay, thank you for your deputation. It's good to see that something that's been very, very necessary for us, the redundancy in that pipe, is something that's moving forward. We've been living a bit of a charmed life for many, many years, and hope isn't always a good strategy. So making sure that we have redundancy in our sewage system is a good thing for us to hear about. And knowing that the region is going to be responsive to what the community issues are is also reassuring. So we thank you very much for that. Could I have a motion to receive the deputation? Counselor Kerwin, Counselor Twitty, all those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, before we take a break, what I'd like to do, a couple of things, is Mr. Chris Howey here? Mr. Howey, you've requested a deputation. And if you could come forward, we'll hear from you. We permit up to five minutes.
The clock starts now? Okay, so, thank you, Tony and the counsel, and welcome, Bob. I've been a longtime resident of Ward Five, moved to Park Avenue in 1976, at a time when you used to have to get out of your car to knock the branches up when it rained. And we lost a whole bunch of sugar maples to disease as well as to new hydro lines being put through. So I am actually a professional arborist as well. I've taken care of trees since 1984. I've removed trees in town on private property, obviously. And living on Park Avenue since 2006, really seeing it lately, not just on development properties, which we are protected, and you do have some provisions to protect trees, but I'm seeing private trees being taken down. Recently, there were three trees taken down at the front of a house on Willstead. I asked the homeowner why, he says, well, the trees were making my house look small. And these were 50, 60-year-old trees that did not need to come down, that could have been pruned or thinned out to let more light. What I'm requesting counsel to take a look at, I understand it was 2012 that the last time a bylaw was put forward or was proposed for private trees. I'd like the counsel to take another look at a private tree bylaw, like City of Toronto, like North York has had since the 90s. I think that we all benefit, just to put it in perspective, you know, we all know that trees absorb carbon dioxide, they also absorb particulates. We're facing, we're in the middle of years and years of construction between Davis, Young Street condos, the wind coming from the west through Ward Five, so, you know, selfishly, you know, luckily, I do, I am on the woodlot on Park Avenue. Strangely, the woodlot does not cover the north side of Beechwood. And there's a property for sale on Beechwood right now that someone could buy, chainsaw the trees, and then put a building permit in. There's nothing to stop them from doing it. It's only when a building permit goes in that trees are protected. And these are 100, 150-year-old trees that are facing chainsaws. So in the last six months, I've documented, there's been 10 trees taken down on Park Avenue, privately. I mentioned about Beechwood, I mentioned about Willstead, there's been trees on Avenue Road taken down. I understand, you know, private citizens have the right to do whatever they want on their property, but because we all get the benefit of trees, and trees as a filter, I think Newmarket should be one of the greenest towns in York Region in Ontario. I also don't see a lot of trees protected by heritage. So we have a stock of heritage sugar maples in town, heritage oaks, that are either not documented or at an age that are susceptible to disease. There's not a lot of young stock, 50 to 75-year-old trees in town that are hardwood oak, beech, maple, we just don't see it in town, it just wasn't planted. So I think we need to encourage private citizens to plant trees that are hardwood, that do absorb oxygen. Forest Ontario has an initiative to plant 50 million trees, but that's only on two and a half acres. I think we, as a town, we do have good stock from the last reports. I don't know the last time there was an inventory done. But I guess my request is to review for a private bylaw, potentially not the whole town, we could look at doing it in the older part of town, unless there's a heritage tree that is on London Road or some of the outlying areas around town. So I think the heritage trees need to be identified around town. I don't have a good sense that we have let private citizens know that they may have a heritage tree on their property. And again, I think that we need to raise awareness of the importance of protecting the older trees that are in town, because, you know, for future generations, we're not all going to be around in whatever years, knock on wood, but I do think we need to replenish the heritage stock that's out there and look at this, especially for planting, when the town's planting trees, planting something that is going to be around for 100 years, a hardwood tree versus planting, I mentioned to the Viva folks, they planted locust trees on Davis Drive. Locust trees grow very wide, they're going to require maintenance, probably not the smartest tree to plant in the middle of a street on Davis Drive. So, you know, I'll pause and open it up for questions.
Thank you. Questions or clarification, then, please, Counselor Heppin.
Actually, I have a question of staff through you, Mr. Mayor. Would you prefer that I wait till we receive the deputation?
Let's receive the deputation, let's do it that way, then, okay? Any questions to the deputant? Counselor Kerwin then.
Yes, thank you, Chris, for your thoughtfulness. I see on the sheet here that it's due to development and lack of protection for trees on private property in the old part of town, to find us Young Street to Main Street, Davis to Eagle. That's the area you're looking at, is that correct?
That was David's suggestion of an old area. I think it does need to be expanded up into your ward as well. You know, and I think any heritage tree anywhere in town should, A, should be protected, but I think there also should be a defined region in town, a defined zone in town. We may not need one up by, you know, by Costco or up in, I don't know if it's East Gwillingbury, but up that end of town, obviously, we're losing a bunch of trees, you know, trees have been taken down through the Glenway lands. So I think heritage trees anywhere in town should be protected. And then potentially, if it's not going to be across the entire town, to look at a defined region to protect.
Right. Who would I, who would I, who would identify a heritage tree, Chris?
Forest Ontario or the urban, I think it's Forestry Ontario comes in to do actual surveys for heritage trees. And there's one actually in your area off of Queen Street that's similar to the oak that's protected on Botshard at the old Liberty Hall. It's got to be 150-year-old oak tree, but it's on private property. My concern is a tree like that, someone could take a chainsaw to it without any of us stopping that.
Would you, you talk about basically hardwood, how about coniferous?
I think any trees of significance, you know, as defined in the current bylaws that we have, should be, you know, significance based on size. So City of Toronto has a permit, this is from the City of Toronto's bylaw, so a permit is required to cut down or in any way injure a tree with a diameter of 30 centimeters or 12 inches, of approximate thickness of a telephone pole, to put it in perspective, on private property, the tree diameter must measure at least, must be measured 4.5 feet from chest level. So again, Toronto has narrowed it down to a telephone pole size on private land, needs a permit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Question or clarification, Regional Counselor?
Yeah, just a comment. First of all, a good presentation, I appreciate it. And I think maybe it is a good idea to revisit this, and spend a while and see what's occurring out there in other jurisdictions, et cetera. The one thing I did think I would mention, because I think it's a benefit counsel as well, is that, actually, just this cycle, last week at Committee of the Hole, we received a presentation from Ian Buchanan, who's an exceptional head of forestry at the region. And he's laying out canopy targets for the region, but he's also breaking them down by municipality. And so with that, that report will be approved through council this month, but it does set out some targets, and it's a good snapshot into the importance of the canopy, meaning not just in forested areas, but also on street trees, and the need to increase that canopy. And so, you know, the timing of that report with what you're speaking of, I think, is important. And so perhaps when we're done, depending on whether we're having it come back to committee or through an information report, but what I'll, actually, what I'll do is I'll just circulate that report to council on the canopy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kind of a motion then to receive the deputation. Counselor Quappus, Counselor Broom, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I believe Counselors Heppin and Counselor Quappus have questions to staff. Counselor Heppin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff. So we have, I know, I believe in the official plan, we have some areas that are identified as woodlots. And, you know, we've, in my ward, we've had instances where we have identified areas of woodlots, and there have been people who want to make changes to those properties and come in and cut down the trees. And I was wondering if maybe staff could maybe give us an explanation of what type of protection is there when we're identifying a woodlot within our official plan? And I'd also like to maybe get an answer as to, do we have any trees or areas, woodlots that are protected under the Ontario Heritage Act? And what the process is of designating a tree for protection? A few questions there.
Right, Mr. Nohammer?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd ask the Director of Planning to add to this. So you're quite correct, Counselor Heppin, in the official plan, there are areas designated as open space and furthermore, areas of woodlot. And again, stand to be corrected by the Director of Planning, and I'll ask him to elaborate on it, but those do speak to preservation of those natural amenities when development applications are being reviewed under the Planning Act. And also, I just wanted to indicate to members of council that the town has also undertaken a urban forestry management plan, which also speaks to existing urban forestry cover and targeted canopy levels in the future, and also the assets that we currently have in our town lands with respect to forestry. So I'll turn it over to the Director of Planning for to answer your question.
Mr. Netheray.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Not much further to add from the Commissioner's or Acting CAO's comments, other than to provide that there are some woodlots, depending on their size, which are deemed to be regional responsibility, and they tend to be the larger ones. And so they are, the trees that are located in those areas are protected. There are some which are identified in a town bylaw, which are similarly also protected. The one in Glenway, for example, comes to mind, and they tend to be smaller parcels. That said, any application that's coming forward with a land use application with it, so someone's applying for rezoning or an official plan, even a minor variance, is put through the rigor of having to go through a tree assessment and deal with compensation if that's the only opportunity. In terms of, so what that does is it leaves just the ones that the deputant was making reference to, those privately held properties that are subject to no development application, that are not subject to that. In terms of the notion of designating heritage trees, I'm afraid I don't know the details of that. So if you like, we can do some research and perhaps provide an information report.
Okay, thank you, just one follow-up question. So if I bought a purchase, if I purchased a piece of property in town and it was designated or listed under official plan as a woodlot, and I wasn't today contemplating developing that land, what restrictions are there for me to go in and actually cut down trees or clearcut it or?
Mr. Netheray.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If you were within one of those two categories of woodlots that I've referenced, you would need to seek approval to do any modification, including pruning and that sort of thing.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Quappus.
It's always difficult to tell people what they can or cannot do on private property. However, I think there's got to be a fine balance on understanding that we are becoming urban center, and trees that are certain age need to be protected in a way. With the current bylaw that we have in place, I would like to see if there's any kind of modification that could be looked at based on the future plan, what the region is trying to accomplish with the green canopy, from what I understand, is that what it's called? And other areas of research based on other towns or regions, what they're doing, and what is it that we need to do looking long-term, and how we can modify some of these bylaws in order to strike that fine balance.
Okay, thank you. Do what we can do after we've had the discussion here, it might be appropriate, if council feels it's appropriate, to ask staff to research the issue that the deputant has brought forward and that we receive some further information in the context of the urban forest plan, urban canopy, and receive an information report, and then we can decide as to whether or not there might be something else that we should review in terms of how we might approach preserving certain trees. But maybe some research from staff and a report from them initially. Regional Counselor.
Thanks, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. An example of a regionally significant woodlot would be the one off Sherwood Place in Ward Five. So it's a collection of forest behind about 10 or 12 homes, roughly there. The other one is, I believe, and we could check on this, but I could be wrong, but I actually believe the very old oak tree at Liberty Hall is a designated heritage tree or has some special designation. We went through that some time ago, and there was actually some work done to make it healthy, to inject it and to try to analyze its health, et cetera. I think it was actually spotted and found by a flyover by somebody interested in this area, of trees, of heritage trees, and approached the town about it. But, yeah, I'd like to see, look at it. I was thinking about an information report at first, too, but since this was coming through a deputation from the public, maybe a report back to committee might be more appropriate, because otherwise, information report is, could, you know, it only comes to council if one of us brings it here. So maybe because it was a deputation driven, so I would move a mo-
So you're asking, the information report come to council already? I'm just kidding.
Yeah, exactly, pretty much.
Okay, if it comes to council, I'm fine with that, sure.
So, yeah, when the appropriate time comes, just move a motion that we receive a report back from staff. But obviously, gives us the history on the former reports and when we visited this, any new developments, the canopy information, and frankly, options, I think, would be helpful, which were probably presented the last time, if I recall correctly, and let's say, within 90 days, if that's possible.
Mr. Nohammer, is a 90-day timeframe a reasonable one? Or achievable, let me say that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's fine. I was also going to suggest that a report back from staff would be appropriate in response to this submission, and we could tie a number of other initiatives in with that as well and advise council with respect to forestry management and what other measures we're undertaking to preserve the canopy in the town.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kerwin?
Yeah, just, there is a tree, a burl oak, that's up at the end of Queen's Crescent, it's on the area in dispute, the Reapell property. I believe there's two burl oaks there that were designated as natural heritage trees, and they're protected. And the other one is the forest, and check on that for me, Rick, if I'm correct or not, but I believe there are two burl oaks up there. I just was there recently. And the other area is the 404, there's a natural heritage forest on the west side of the 404 going down that was designated, I believe, a natural heritage forest that's protected, as well as the one on the Glenway property.
And the hardwood one on Bristol Road as well, that's another area. But I think the concern here is around losing trees, losing mature trees in the older part of town on private property. So I'll entertain a motion then, that we ask staff to provide us with a report within 90 days, it seems to be achievable, to address the concerns with respect to removal of trees on private property. Okay? Okay, well, I can't move it, so I'll let you move it then. Regional Counselor, one second. Okay, does anybody wish to speak to that further then? Being none, then, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried, great. Let's deal with the consent items on the agenda, and then we'll take a break. Okay, so the consent items are items four to 17.
Eighteen is accounted.
And, sorry?
Which we deal with tonight.
Yeah, 18 is accounted, yeah, so that's, and that's an action item, and that's dealt with separately. Number 19, a couple of things I'd like to be- Number nineteen, a couple of things I'd like to be clear of with respect to the consent agenda. Item 12A, which is the request from the BIA concerning allocation of space, if we're adopting this by consent, we're adopting the operational team recommendation, is that the matter be referred to staff, which seems to be appropriate. The, the other item that I'd like to be clear about as well is item number nineteen, I believe that's a consent item as well, as is twenty, that the approval is with respect to the theme, and that's part of the process. So, so just to clarify those two items, items to be dealt with separately. Counselor Twinney.
Item number four, please.
Item number four? Okay. Counselor, Regional Counselor?
Yeah, sorry, I missed which one was just said there, so if I-
Item number four, which was-
Oh, okay, five and six, please.
Five and six? Okay.
And seven.
And seven. Okay. Counselor Kerwin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one that came in late, the report on the work of art by the Old Town Hall.
Item number-
Two sixteen dash twenty-eight.
Item number nineteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, the item with the outstanding matters on it, just want to find out where we are on certain issues.
Item number seventeen?
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, any other items? Item number nineteen has been pulled?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Could I have a motion then to approve items number eight through to sixteen, and item number, yeah, eight through to sixteen, and item twenty? Counselor Bezant, seconded by Counselor Quappas. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Let's take a break, maybe reconvene at quarter to four. Okay?
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with our separate discussion items. The first item is item number four, and that is the zoning bylaw amendment, as well as the official plan amendment for 1166, 1186 Nicholson Road. We do have some recommendations before us. Could I have a motion with respect to the recommendations? Counselor Twinn, seconded by Regional Counselor. Counselor Twinn is the mover.
Uh, great, thank you. Um, just some questions, because we did have a public meeting on this, and there was some concern with regards to, I guess, the outdoor storage. And, um, actually, the mayor gave me a note from you, Mr. Netherly, with regards to what can be stored there. And, you know, I mean, that there is, uh, there is some items that are, cannot be stored, such as things that would cause an odor and things like that. And I guess that's where some of the concern was, that, you know, we didn't know what was going to be able to be stored there. So that was, I guess I had my question answered with that regards, because the, uh, the bylaw would specifically not allow that to be. Through you, Mr. Mayor, is that correct?
Mr. Netherly?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. And I, I think we further suggested that if, if there was some real concern on council's part, we could give consideration to a site-specific clause that made reference to sort of prohibiting a certain type of open storage, I suppose. But you're otherwise, you do have the opportunity through site plan control and, and the normal sorts of procedures to, to satisfy yourselves that it's not a use that is inappropriate.
I'm sorry, through you. So we would get, if something does, like, there's nothing actually designated, nothing is actually in place now that's going to go in there. It's just basically changing the, the bylaw so that they can extend, I guess, the ability to rent it to more people, I guess, or more, more types of businesses. Is that correct?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. I think they're trying to enhance the marketing opportunities on the property. So by permitting that additional bit of open storage, I think is seen as beneficial to them.
Great. Okay, great, thank you. I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, Regional Counselor?
Um, yeah, no, I just want to point out that the Conservation Authority is recommending, and I think that's what is being done, is a 30-meter setback, which I think is, you know, very significant protection of that area. And I think makes this very reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried, thank you. Item number five is the site alteration bylaw. Do you have recommendations? Could I have a motion, please? Regional Counselor?
Yeah, I'll move it to put on the table. I do have some questions, though.
Seconder, Counselor Quappas. Okay, speaking to the motion as the mover.
Well, thanks very much. We're dealing with a new cut-and-fill by, or, well, a bylaw to replace this, the site, uh, the current cut-and-fill bylaw. So this is about the ability for people to remove or place fill in sites. And just wanted to understand this a little more. This was, I, I guess this is part of, my first question is, this is part of a best practices effort coming out of the Conservation Authority, or at least in conjunction with them, because it refers to, they had developed a draft Lake Simcoe watershed model bylaw for municipalities. So is that where this is sort of born out of?
Ms. Prudhomme?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Yes, absolutely, you're correct. With the more stringent regulations now, and with our knowledge of the impact of phosphorus and sediment on the Lake Simcoe watershed, this has now become necessary, because we have, we hadn't reviewed this bylaw for several years.
Okay. So the questions I have, if I can, one is just a minor one in nature, but it's the top of page 70, section 4.4. And it's saying that no person should carry out any sale alteration adjacent or within 30 meters, coincidentally after the discussion we just had, of wetlands, fish habitat, et cetera, without having been issued a permit under this bylaw by the municipality and/or without having obtained written permission from the LSRCA where applicable. I'm, grammatically, what is that telling me? Does that mean both, or one or the other, or?
Ms. Prudhomme?
Mr. Mayor, um, yes, it would mean that in certain circumstances, the LSRCA does require its own permitting, but in other instances, it doesn't. So in all cases, it would be a town permit for sure. But it's, it's optional, depending on the, well, it's not necessarily optional. It's, it's recommended in certain instances, under certain conditions, by the LSRCA.
Okay. All right, it's just a thought, but you might actually say, without having been issued by, a permit under this bylaw by, you know, the town of Newmarket, and also perhaps needing a further permit from the LSRCA. Might be a little clear, if that's what you're, if I'm hearing you right, if that's what it's saying. The real, the real question, I'm, two things I'm interested in in particular. Well, a few, but is, has this been circulated to any, any current, anybody with ongoing development in the town of Newmarket, or pending development applications, or build for comment?
Rachel?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Build has been participating in the LSRCA working group that has developed the model bylaw. So they have had input on that. And it is heavily based on that particular model bylaw. So there aren't very many differences between ours and theirs.
So just, then just to be especially prudent, then it's one, then it's consistent with, the build's input is consistent with the, on page 74, it says, "The permits issued under this bylaw shall expire 90 days after the date of issuance of a permit." Is that something build was, and I'm not just saying it's about what build wants, but that just seemed tight to me, in some, knowing what can happen in planning, or when you're working forward that, if you, if you went and got the permit, and then if you haven't commenced work within 90 days, it's, it's then, it's no longer valid. Is that something they were, the development community, or people who are more active in developing sites that this would pertain to, were comfortable with?
Ms. Prudhomme, go ahead.
It's through you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is quite standard throughout the industry. And certainly, if it does cause an issue, it can be revisited. For the time being, though, the 90 days is something that is recommended, because if you wait longer than that, the site conditions can change.
True, I was, yeah, I was thinking that's the one side of it, but I just thought, you know, don't want to, we want to be, we want to be environmentally good stewards and protective, but we also want to be good partners to ensuring that development and progress can happen in our community, and not become too, too much of a, too much red tape, to use an overused phrase. But, uh, so if I can, then the last question I had, and this was the one that really stuck out at me, and you can maybe make me feel more comfortable with it, but it's on page 70, and it says, it's under 4.7. And it says, no-
Sorry, I don't, I don't have the page numbers here, so it takes me a little while to find the section.
Page eight of the report, or 70 of our bylaw. So page eight of the bylaw.
Okay.
Uh, 4.7, "No permit shall be issued if, and no person shall permit or cause be permitted, any site alteration activities that result in," and it has a series of items. H was the one that sort of jumped out at me as a little bit of, almost seemed to be a catch-all. It's a very broad net. And it says, "A negative impact on any environmental protection areas or areas of natural or scientific interest, wetlands or wetland complex as identified by the LSRCA, MNRF, the town, and the town's official plan, or zoning bylaw, as each may be amended from time to time." And it seemed like there was a lot of areas and a lot of jurisdictions. And I guess what I was concerned with, not that, I'm sure the town, the Conservation Authority would be reasonable in assessing, you know, what's a negative impact, et cetera, but wouldn't it be possible for, well, would it be possible for a very, let's say, let's say a neighbor who's not, or somebody who's not, yeah, or competing interest, who's not happy with something going forward, to say, "Hang on, you're saying it's, the permit shouldn't be issued if it has a negative impact, period, on any of this." Not if it can't be mitigated, or, or in the, you know, in the eyes of staff, that it's, it's an impact that's, can't be mitigated or offset, or it just says a negative. So my, my concern, and I guess it's maybe through to our commissioner as well, to, to Sarah Chuckball, is that, is, am I being unduly concerned that this is a very broad and wide-ranging prohibition, potentially? That, am I reading it wrong when I read almost any negative impact on any series of things, as ju, could, and could, can this only be triggered by the organizations that listed LSRCA, the town, MNRF? Or could, again, somebody with a competing interest, or a disgruntled neighbor say, you know, this, your bylaw, and it says, "Any negative impact," essentially. It doesn't say any, but a negative, which could be deemed to be any. So that, that would be my question.
Rachel?
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the, the purpose of this clause is to highlight the fact that when an applicant makes an application for this new, this new permit, they can't be ignorant of the fact that there are other organizations that they must check with as well. So this sort of highlights the fact that they should be cognizant of the MNRF regulations, the town's official plan, the zoning bylaws, and other matters as well. It, it wasn't the intention to be a catch-all, so that we can receive frivolous complaints from, from neighbors. So I don't think those would pass the test.
Would it be worth considering, or putting in something that was more like a, a negative impact, or, I'm trying to think, I don't have the right wording, but, or, or an impact that couldn't be mitigated, or that didn't have an offset or a mitigation plan? And then, not as identified by the LMRC, MNRF, the town, but as adjudicated, or, because identified could say, "Well, the town said that that's, that's an area, because it's in their plan, that that's a wetland, so that's been identified. I can show you're having a negative impact even minor." I guess I'm worried it's, if, if there could be, and even if you look at J, again, "No permit shall be issued if an adverse effect to archaeological or historically significant features." Well, I just take the Bathurst extension. I mean, uh, they, they went in and mapped and did mitigation and did a full inventory, but they had a very significant First Nations longhouse site. But the project still had to go forward and went forward, after they did everything they could to preserve the information and the artifacts. But when I read this, it just says, "No permit if there's an adverse effect archaeologically," period. So I'm wondering, on those two in particular, if we shouldn't be considering wording that was a little more nuanced around, you know, you know, or, you know, adverse effect or a mitigation approach. You know what I'm trying to say, I don't have the language, but.
Go ahead, Rachel?
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. I understand completely what your concern is. And if you, if you're accepting, we could take that under advisement. I can put this through our legal department and check with the LSRCA again, and put in any modification that we think would be necessary to address your concern.
That'd be great, yeah. And I, if it requires us, then it would, I guess, might have to be done by council. I don't know if that, how you handle that.
Would that be reasonable?
If somebody could look at that, and then, and it's just really, I think those two areas, maybe there's more, and you guys catch another one, but just something that ensures that, that others, you know, can't boy the bylaw and say, "No, the bylaw was very clearly and strictly worded." Because I think in some cases, when we're talking about environmental impacts or archaeological impacts, there's often, it's a net negative impact, right? Which means you can have a, an impact, but you've created some benefits, or you've created a plan, or a mitigation plan, or something to offset that. And, and that's the kind of nuance I'm trying to get at. Thank you.
Okay, and Counselor Quappas?
Going on, uh, the item 5.3, which is again, page 70, right at the very bottom. It says, "The sites less than .5 hectares in size shall be exempt." I assume that would be because of the residential areas, that you don't want to tie up any red tape with people that have less than .5 hectares?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. Is there anyone that has taken account of how many properties, residential properties, we have in Newmarket that have more than .5 hectares?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I wouldn't be able to answer that right now, but we can certainly see if that information is available for you, and send you a memo on that.
That'd be great. And the reason I'm asking is because if somebody decides to, let's say, as an example, put a garden in an area where they do have more than .5 hectares, again, I just wanted to find out what that of an impact. Should we worry about things of that sort? And if we should, if there's a significant amount of owners that have that type of property, we need to consider that.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? I'm wondering, given the nature of the discussion, if we, we have two options. One would be to, to approve the recommendations subject to clarifications of item 4.7, H and J, or alternatively, to refer this to council for review. But I think that would narrow down the scope in terms of what we'd like to accomplish. Ms. Nohammer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It, I think, given the comments, and if committee is agreeable, we could look at some of the wording changes, or the administrative changes to the bylaw itself. And if committee feels comfortable with the direction, or, or the principle of the site alteration bylaw, we could bring the actual reworded bylaw to council, if, if that's satisfactory arrangement with committee.
Regional Counselor, you raise it? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So then, do we want to add that subject clarification to the section? Or we take that as a direction to staff? As a direction to staff? Okay, okay. Any further discussion? So we'll, we'll deal with that as a direction to staff to provide clarification of those two sections, okay? Any further discussion? Oh, sorry.
Could I just understand that? So, but if there's, if the clarification involves staff thinking there, there is potentially a, a change that might be an improvement, that would come back to council? Otherwise, the clarification would just be a memo, or help? I guess I'm not sure where this, I can't tell the-
How would you kind of approach that, Mr. Nohammer?
Yes, so I think there are some improvements to the wording on the identified clauses that we could include in amended bylaw that we would bring to council, and we could explain that ahead of the council meeting.
Okay, and that, and that would include consideration of the alteration of the .5, if, if it seems like there's only 40 properties, and they're all within .7 or something, then we might as well just say .7, and, and treat all residential ones equally. So you'll look at that area as well, that was raised by Counselor Quappas?
Okay.
So however you want to phrase it, it's fine with me.
Okay, if we could do a direction to staff, and maybe a covering report that, that would outline the changes and the impact of those changes. But the report would come forward as staff recommends the change in wording, and then a covering report to outline why that's being recommended. And that could be a point of discussion at council. Is that good? Good?
Okay.
All understood? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried, thank you. Item number six, consultation, transportation services. We do have a recommendation, that is, the adoption of Appendix A, and that, and that the recommendations be reviewed both internally and by the public throughout the next year, for improvements in 2018. Can I have a, a motion with respect to the recommendations? At least just to get it on the table?
Yeah, I'll move it to get on the floor.
Okay, all right. Seconder, Counselor Perezans. Regional Counselor is the mover.
Thanks very much. I have, I have some, some concerns about the direction, and I guess it's specific to, what I, so what I see is, if I can turn to page Appendix A, which is page 100 for members of council, the, what I see is that the approach taken to the staff decision point of this, of this protocol, if you want to call it that, the staff decision is based on policy warrants or sound engineering judgment, based on warrants or OTM book requirements or sound engineering judgment, which I think is important and reasonable. But that, that, what I think is very important line, seems to fall out when it comes to 2.1, parking restrictions and traffic calming measures, speed mitigation. I'd go so far as saying that when it comes to traffic calming, if I'm reading this correctly, it almost seems to suggest that if a counselor, if the ward counselor thinks it's a good idea, and 25% of the household streets want it studied, it gets studied, and then if 50% of the people on the street want something, it occurs. And, and the language around engineering considerations, I mean, there is a reference to safety review, but safety isn't the only other, I believe, municipal policy or, or- other, I believe, municipal policy or, or, or perspective that should be brought to the table, and I really like the language of the others about, based on, you know, policy, engineering judgment, and perhaps, and safety. But I'd like, unless there's an argument as why we wouldn't embed that in these as well, I'd hate to see us in a situation, and again, I could be reading this wrong, but in a situation where we're getting, and I might get some pushback from some members of, of council here, but where we're getting speed bumps put in because 50% in, in multiple locations in, in different wards, because 50% of the people in each area agreed it was needed, and, and again, I could be missing this, but I, 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 I think if the staff decision language that was used in the first ones was included still even, and, I mean, maybe it's not as necessary in parking, but it certainly can't hurt, I think having that extra lens that says, you know, another major consideration here is staff's recommendation based upon town policies, provincial policies, safety, engineering, and, and just also for the public as they, because this is an area the public really engages in, as they engage and look at the process, that they see that's still a very important part of the process, it's not, it, we're not, we're not doing our traffic planning and our traffic mitigation by, by referendum only.
Mr. Perdon?
Which might be overstating a little bit, but that's, so that, that was my area of concern, is, is that a valid point?
Go ahead, Rachel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a very valid suggestion, and we have no problem in adding that in there. In the cases where we do have a survey, I think the sound engineering judgment has already come across before the survey is issued, because we would recommend certain mitigation methods based on our engineering judgment and on policies and on regulations that are in effect through MTO, so, but adding it again is not an issue at all, so, I, I also noticed that it's not in 2.2, it's not in 2.1, so we can add it in both of them.
That's the areas in particular, exactly. And it's 2.2 is the one that's really concerning me, is that, and especially because it's under staff decision, it really, it goes straight to the 50%.
Yes, we have no objection to adding that.
The other thing I was wondering about is that, I think it's mentioned in here that some of them will have a initiation, that's kind of already there, but initiation requirement of a ward councillor through committee of the whole, and, and I think somewhere in the report it also said something about, you know, having a ward councillor helps, you know, I don't think the language is quite that, but that's a, a filter for need, right? It's sort of, at least the ward councillor makes priority, and I guess what I'm raising in a, and I can't quite find a, a sensitive or a discreet way to raise it, but there's also a mayor and a regional councillor in town, and, first of all, I mean, if you read strictly, it would appear we can't initiate something like this, A, but B, you know, maybe we go a step further and say for some of the more substantive areas, that it requires the, the three members who are direct representatives of people in an area to, to, or two of the three or something, so, just floating that out there for thought, perhaps, you know, if you had two of the three, the regional councillor, the mayor, and the ward councillor who agreed that an initiative needed to be considered, that would be another screen on, because the point of this report, I think, in part, is to try to manage staff resources, i.e., our resources, taxpayers' money, so that not, not every single resident in town is able to trigger a, a study and a staff report, and traffic counts on, on every possible corner of the street in town, that there needs to be some criteria that are met and levels of, that bring it to that level of, of discussion and analysis, and, so, on a minor point, I think, the, the, I think, should we recognize that in some cases, the regional councillor, the mayor may want to initiate something, but maybe even we go a step further and require all three to, to take it to a certain level, or to take it to a full study, or two of three or something. Anyway, I'm sure I've said enough to, to get some comments flowing, so I'll stop there.
Councillor Bazanz is the second.
Thank you. First of all, I, I really want to thank staff for, for bringing this forward, I think initially I was the one who recommended we take a look at the approach that, that we currently have with initiating this kind of investigation and, and looking at how we develop recommendations and then, then implement any changes as a result of what had happened with the, the WoodSpring Avenue parking situation when the bike lanes came in, and residents felt that they had been surprised, caught short, knowing about the change coming in, and then wanting to see if they could have that, that amended, and we had a petition, but the petition was viewed to be invalid, so I'm, I'm really glad to see the consideration in this report coming forward. I'm sure that, you know, if, if all of us around the table look at, at the number one issue that tends to come through customer service with respect to ward concerns and complaints, parking is at the top of the list, probably followed by, by speeding on streets, among some other things, but certainly parking is, is a big issue of concern, and, and I agree that the current process where one individual can sort of launch all of this happening, and, and I recently went through a situation where I followed protocol as, as required, and the, the outcry and the reverberation from the people on that particular street who wanted to know where and why I thought that I had the right to change parking, and why was the town of Newmarket getting in the way of, of people having the right to park in front of their homes, getting in the way of property values potentially decreasing if we took parking away, getting in the way of senior citizens from being able to visit their family members because they couldn't park on the street, if parking in the driveway wasn't, I mean, it, it was quite, quite dramatic in terms of the, the negative response, and it was all sort of, we followed the protocol, we initiated the investigation, we went to survey the residents, but there wasn't really an understanding of the process and why and how it had been initiated, so certainly in the parking elements of this report, I, I think that we, it's timely that we look at the process and, and really have a requirement that there be more than just one, one resident, and put some onus, if you will, on residents to, to go and check with, with their neighbors to see if there's some, some concurrence. I mean, I have this situation where there's a couple of residents who want to abolish all parking on their street and the neighboring street, and residents on those streets who don't agree with that, so it's, it's, you know, it's a very difficult situation that, that does put a lot of requirement on staff and on the ward councillor then to go through, you know, the whole process of explaining and, and so forth, so, so from the standpoint of looking at the policy and procedure, I think that this is, this is definitely in the right direction. I, I did have some questions about whether it would then, similar to what was raised, would it raise some expectations that, you know, if I got a majority of people, neighbors on my street agreeing to something, does that mean automatically that it will go through? And I think we do have to rely on, on traffic engineering's response, and, and what some people may believe to be a safety issue may in fact not be a safety issue, or may not be warranted, or may cause some greater, greater problems. The other thing that, that I was wondering about is with respect to, so, there's some very significant changes that will come about as a result of our active transportation plan and, and the routes, and I think we need to let people know now, so things that, that may change as a result of that don't come as a, as a total surprise to them. So, there's, there's more sort of communications around not just this protocol and process that, that has been recommended, that we monitor over the year, but I think some other issues that we need to be looking at from a communication standpoint now. So, I'm, I'm very supportive, I, you know, I appreciate that, that this is sort of, let's get this in place and then get some feedback over the next year, and then look at quality improvements, but, you know, I think that there's some communication that needs to happen now about what the process has been and why it's, it's challenging, and then look at implementing it and quality improvements.
Okay, so with respect to the communications component, would you be happy with that as a direction to staff, ask staff to, to make sure that we get this new process out and in place and better understood, that in addition to the active transportation plan?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so it'd be a direction to staff that we work with that on, okay, good. Councillor Quapas?
Yes, I need a, just a little bit of clarification in Appendix A, section 2.1, actually 2.2 specifically, when we're talking about traffic calming measures and speed mitigation, you were saying that 25% of households on a street with a minimum of 10 households in favor, I'm just, need clarification, if the street is fairly large and most of the streets that have speed issues are, are fairly long and straight, I'm trying to get clarification on of how many, what's the percentage, and what section of that street needs to comply or say yes, or do we have to consider the full street? So, let's take Queen or Millard for as an example, or Sanford, do we have to take the whole street under consideration, and the residents on the whole street to support traffic calming measures?
Mr. Perdon?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would expect that it would be in a section of the road that is particularly concerned with speeding. As you know, as soon as we do get a speeding concern, we usually add that to our roster of locations where we put up our speed boards, our speed boards do collect a lot of information that we download into our system, and we can see if there is a speeding issue, so whether or not we do implement speed, traffic calming mitigation methods would depend on the number of households that, that ask for it, so it would be within a particular section where there is an issue.
Will we be able to get clarification how big the section needs to be in order to initiate any kind of traffic calming measures?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's a very good suggestion, and maybe if I could recommend that we take this back and incorporate some of the suggestions that were made today and bring it back to council at the next committee of the whole.
An example might be a city block or a community block or something like that.
Something to be specific.
Right, and, Mr. Mayor, we'd also need direction from council in general to modify the, the two, two out of the three, ward councillor, regional councillor, and mayor as well, as was suggested by the regional councillor.
Okay. So, you want to put that motion on the floor? Okay, all right, all right. Are you finished?
Yes.
Regional councillor?
Thanks, so just on a, a couple topics, one is, I, I'm, I'm okay with not doing the two or three or complicated things, but I do think the language should be altered to say that can be initiated by the ward, you know, initiation requirement ward councillor, or I could just say a member of council, member of, member of council, ward councillor, or a member of, however you want to phrase it, but something that was, you know, a little more inclusive of, of the mayor and myself, the two of the three thing, I think, is, might overly complicated. The one thing I would say is, I was thinking exactly what councillor Quapas was thinking about the 25, especially in the parking and the traffic calming, it says 25% of households between two intersections or 25% of households on a street, and then you were talking about how to clarify that. I actually, I, so I'm glad you're going to take this back, and I don't even mind this one waiting another cycle, but I do think, this is a, this is a kind of a, people are passionate about this, and there's going to be some people who are going to become expertly versed in what this system is, and frankly, Mr. Quapas is a, a very good example of somebody who, who took great, you know, a lot of concern and, and interest in this area and knew it very well, and, prior to being on council, and so, there'd be other residents who will want to understand exactly what this protocol is and how to engage in it, and so I'd like us to, to think about laying these out in a way that's, you know, very, very clear, but also, I think, I would say that the point about, it's, I know it's somewhere else, but I think we need to restate that the surveys are conducted by staff, and I think we need to put it here, because people are going to be, and if it does say that, I apologize, but I, so that people, whenever they read this, they're going to know exactly how the process goes from step, and so you've got some of the steps in here, but, and I think you should say that, that 25% of the households in the affected area as, as deemed the affected area by staff. I, I don't think you're ever going to be able to say it's in between, because everyone's going to be different, some are going to be very long, some will be on a curve, some will involve two intersections, and I think staff have to, we have to trust and tell the public we trust our staff to, to decide what the affected area is, and then to say, okay, that's where the survey will take place. So, I would say some language like that would be, would give you more latitude, but it would also make it more meaningful, because I think it's going to be very hard in advance to imagine every scenario and, and have a standard that would work in every scenario. I also think that where we have reporting, it says staff reporting to committee of the whole, I think, I think it should say something more like, staff decision is up top, then I think it should say council decision. So, again, people see the process flow, and if you had council decision, then you say council decision will be based upon staff report, staff recommendation, and public input. And again, it reminds everybody that no matter what some of these things, trigger points are, and how we can get surveys, et cetera, that the decision will be always made on the basis of all the information, not just on a survey, right? So, and I think if we think about flowing it that way, and, and then including the other, other things we discussed about, you know, the inclusion awards around engineering and safety and staff's, you know, input, et cetera. So, yeah, so if we could, I don't know if, I, I don't imagine it's necessary to try to, to put, to rush this through for council unless there's, somebody feels there's, it's imperative, but otherwise, I think if we wait another cycle and, and sort of, and I think, and not that it wasn't the case, but I think if we really think about this in terms of how clear you can, you know, as, as a resident looking at it going, okay, so this is the process, and I can see by clear steps through it, because that's how they're going, many residents are going to look at it, they're not going to be looking at it going, oh, there's a process and somebody's handling it, they're going to be looking, how do I engage myself in this process? So, I think the clearer it's sort of, step by step, lays that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Might be appropriate then to take a motion to defer this to the next committee of the whole, for staff to consider the, the items highlighted in the discussions today. Who would like to move that?
To refer it back?
To defer. No, we can refer back, I guess it would be better, because that way, otherwise, if we differ, then we have the same report come back, right? So, we'll refer this back to staff. Councillor Bazanz? Regional councillor? Okay, so the referral is back to staff for the next round, okay? Lot of good progress there, it's just shining the edges, yep, good, thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried, thank you. So, that was referred. Okay. Just. Okay, item number seven, it's the minutes for the Heritage Committee, and that, that is the minutes. That's correct. Could I have a motion to receive them for regional councillor, seconded by councillor Quapas? Any discussion regarding the matter?
Yes.
Regional councillor is the mover.
Thanks, the first one first, the June. There are three properties that are being recommended for designation or designation requests. In conversation with the mayor and the ward five councillor, we were trying to, or sorry, the, the ward four councillor, trying to, to figure out if the, and I believe it might have been clarified, but I just want to be certain, it does say that on two of these, it says that the designation is a request from the owner to designate, but on one, which is, I believe, the Quaker Meeting House, it says a requested, as related to a request to designate, I just wanted to be sure that that was a, a request from the, from the owner to, or the Quaker.
Mr. Nohammer?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, I can confirm, I did verify with staff in our planning department who support the Heritage Newmarket Advisory Committee, that all three properties were at the request of the property owner.
Okay.
In fact, the property that you referred to, the building itself is already municipally designated, and this would apply to the balance of the property itself.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Okay, and the second here. Councillor Quapas? Any comments or questions?
No.
As a second.
Just to clarify.
Okay, good. All right, councillor Kerwin, did I, are you? Okay, I'll call the question then.
I, I see that there's a, a member on the, on the heritage, his name is Rohit Singh, and I was just going to ask Tom to inform him that he is the person designated to sit on the Historical Society, but I haven't seen him in two years, I don't know even who he is. I sit on the Historical Society Board, and that person is designated by Newmarket Heritage to sit on the Historical Board. We have other members. Heritage to sit on the Historical Board, we have other members from other boards on the Historical Society, so if someone could inform him that he is the designate from the Heritage Society to the Historical Society, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, maybe we could have the clerk's office follow up on that?
And, and make sure, Andrew, that I'm correct, that he was the person who was designated by the Heritage Society to sit on the Historical Society Board, okay?
All right.
Be appreciated.
Okay, thank you, no further questions, all those in favor, any opposed, that is carried, thank you, remaining items, the outstanding matters.
Oh, there's one before that, number 19.
Oh, okay, I was just going alphabetically, but okay, let's, let's go to item number 19, all right, I'm going, I was going numerically, item number 19, that's the Old Town Hall Public Art Installation, we do have recommendations, and again, the recommendations request that council confirm the theme in the, within the body of the report, I have a, a motion with respect to this report, wish to move that, if not, just to get it on the table.
I'll move it with an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to amend it so that council authorizes that, et cetera, et cetera, as amended, and the amendment I'd be proposing is that the theme, which is to be brought to.
Which page, John?
Page 153.
So 154 is where they talk about the theme, and the, the process does say that council's given an opportunity to approve the theme, so I'm speaking to the theme at this point, I, I, the amendment I would suggest is that, I, I think, not that I'm an expert in this area, but I think we're, we're going one step too far in saying it, it must contain a functioning clock, we could say it may or, or just leave it out, but I think that should be open to our, you know, some, some art level of artistic interpretation, I think laying out the theme and sort of robustly describing it might, you might end up with some of those, but somebody might come up with some other take on, on time that, that doesn't necessarily have a clock, but is, you know, quite compelling, and so I, that would be the one thing I would, I'm, I'm certainly recognize I'm, I'm getting down into the weeds a little here, but it's just, we are here to approve the theme and that's the, that's the thought I have on it, so I would suggest that as an amendment that we...
Hasn't been seconded yet. Do you want a second to just get it on the table, David?
Sure, I have some questions.
Okay, John, I don't see the phrase where it says must contain a clock.
It says would contain, under project theme time, it's the first words.
Would, okay, okay, so you're suggesting that we amend that to read may, okay, okay, any further discussion from the mover?
Yeah, I, no, just, I, I actually would change that to could, so the piece could contain a functioning clock or could or could not, or something that makes it more optional to that degree.
Okay, all right, that's the secondary then, councillor Kerwin.
Yeah, I, I have some questions, the first page, as this was the first time issuing an RFP for public art under the new public art plan and policy, a number of lessons were learned, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Colin Service, what were these lessons learned, Mr. Service or Mr. McDougal?
Mr. Service?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I'm referring to the follow-up report that, that contained the amendments, so greater need for public input into the process, so that's why we moved to that amendment to have a public voting in the process, as well as a jury that is a better representation of both staff, the artistic community and the general community.
Excuse me, what was that again, Colin?
A jury that would select the final two pieces that was a better representation of both staff, the artistic community and the general community, so those would be the big, the big lessons are.
Okay, just to follow up on that, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Colin, does it include NAC at all, the Newmarket Arts Council? You know, when I look at the council will be given opportunity to prove the theme of the art piece in advance of the issuance of an RFP, that a jury would be formed comprised of three staff members, three professional artists and one community member representative, preferably a resident living in close proximity to the location of the installation, well, that's the Old Town Hall, but you know, you know, I question that, people move, like 20% of people living in Ward Two will move within four years, maybe higher now, so why, why would we put that clause in there, I don't understand that, I mean, this is a piece of art that's, that's there for 100,000 people, that's our population now that I calculate, so why would we, just because you live within the distance of the Old Town Hall, it's going to be used by everyone within the town, that's the purpose of the Old Town Hall, so why would we restrict it to a person living close proximity, I mean, not only that, people are going to come in from, from all over the region of York and the province of Ontario to use the Old Town Hall, that's what it's there for, and, and this art has to be appealing not just to a person who lives within a proximity of the Old Town Hall, but I don't follow the logic there, and, and, and is there, remember, like here we formed NAC, the Newmarket Arts Council, where is their involvement, like, they're, they're fading, Colin, they won't even exist anymore, because they don't feel they're getting anywhere, that's just, even though Chrissy Manuel has now stepped in, people are just resigning from that committee, or their, their term has expired and you can't find replacements, they don't find that they're being listened to, so where is NAC, and why, why that clause in there, I, I don't, I don't follow this.
Colin?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, with respect to NAC, what we have asked NAC to do is assist in recruitment of the jury itself and in recruitment of the artists that would be involved in the jury, so as we go through the jury selection process, we will engage the Newmarket Arts Council in helping us to select that jury.
Could a member of NAC sit on that jury?
They could certainly apply to be a part of that jury, yep.
Okay.
The other component to your question, why a resident in that area, basically as a response to what happened with our last attempt at this, one of the pieces that was felt was missing by, by council at that point in time was general feedback from the community as a whole, I appreciate that Old Town Hall is a site that will be visited by many, but the policy itself has been amended to include a resident from that area wherever the installation is, so in this particular case, it happens to be a site that will be viewed and toured and used by many, but the policy itself is, is not restricted to just this site, but the actual idea that a member of the community who lives in that area, and again, I want to reiterate that this is only a jury that's selecting it to the final two, the final two will then be on display for the public to vote on, so it will be up to the public to determine at that point in time.
Okay, just, just a couple of other questions, when our staff negotiates contributions from developers, for instance, in my ward Falcon Crest, they're building 73 town homes, I believe that a volunteer contribution of $1,500 for trail comes in, and $400 now to beautify the entrances to the town of Newmarket, and 500 toward public art, is, is the 500 toward, am I correct in those figures?
I wonder if I might be off, Mr. McDougal?
Yeah, these are the voluntary contributions.
These are the voluntary contributions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I believe those numbers are correct, on the entrance features right now is designated for that, but there may be other community projects that may come out.
Okay, community project, is, is this, is this then the $500 which is contributed to the public art?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Kerwin, on the $500 public art contribution, there is a public art reserve, and so as council's aware with the public art plan and policy, we've looked at the town, we've got a, we've mapped out where we'd like to see public art installations over time, and so the contributions on developers are going in to that reserve, in some cases they'll go for a site-specific piece of public art that's immediately related to that, to that development, or it goes into this reserve and it's, it's then invested in a piece of public art in, in time in a designated area in keeping with the public art policy, so some funds, you know, may go to this piece or may be in the reserve for, for other pieces.
Where, where then, through you, Mr. Mayor, again to you, Ian, or to Colin, where does the $75,000 come from?
Mr. McDougal?
Does it come out of this, this public art fund that we've, we've set up recently, or where will the $75,000, will it come out of capital or will it come out of this particular fund?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Kerwin, that would come out of the, the funding source is the public art reserve, which there is funds in that reserve, I believe the funds currently sit in the neighborhood of about just under $300,000 in that reserve at the present time.
So that total sum of money would come out of that fund?
Correct.
And it would not impact on when we come to look at capital expenditures?
Correct.
This, that special fund, the 15, okay, great, and the, and the spot that's designated is the Old Town Hall area for this?
Northeast corner.
Piece of public art.
Mr. Sherwood?
Is that correct?
Mr. Service?
Yes, that's correct, the northeast corner of the property of the Old Town Hall.
The north and the east, okay, where the original one was designated to be.
Right.
Is the, is the infrastructure, did we put the infrastructure in for the original one, or do we have to now go back and begin to tear out?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have the electrical conduit that's necessary if this piece of public art requires electricity and, and any other infrastructure that's necessary.
Okay, so we, we have the four, okay, great, thank you, Colin, you've been most thorough, great, great, thank you so much.
Regional counselor?
Thanks very much, so the first question is to the, the project budget, I, I mean, I know we have budgets on a lot of things, but I, I guess I'm just curious, how do we handle this when it goes out, I, I, I'm sure we're not saying that it has to be 65,000, so this could involve some soft, some, some other costs as well, I assume, I mean, maintenance is separated out, but, I mean, do we put it out as something like there's a range or, because, do we say like, you know, the range is 30 to 65,000, or, I mean, or, or do we not put that out, but they might come and find the report and read it, or how, how does that work?
Mr. Service?
We can certainly put it out as a range, and we do have to have that top end of the range in there, because there are some artists who simply won't, won't bid at that point in time if it's not worth it financially, so we do have to have that, that high point in the range, but we can put it out as a range.
I think it'd be a good idea, because I think, a little bit of research I did in this past, I think sometimes you'll find that some, depending on what it is, it could be done less costly and so there might be, so, and then the finishing point would be, I actually agree with councillor Kerwin completely about the, the idea of making sure the person lives within close proximity, I mean, for myself, that, that is more about getting a community, a non-artist perspective, just a, a community member's perspective, and people move, et cetera, it's, I'm at the risk of, of driving, perhaps driving you around the bend, Colin, I'm, I'm going to suggest, even though we've previously approved this, that we change this to not only drop that, but I actually think that, I think that the jury should be made up of three staff members, and, and the reason I'm doing this, and I know it's, it's not nitpicking, it's this is our last chance before this policy hopefully stays as it is for a long time for many installations, but I think it should be three staff members, two artists and two community members, and drop the part about proximity, and the reason I think it should be two community members and not three in one is because really that was one of the things we wanted to capture, was the, the community perspective more and more, and I know the, the, the voting does that as well, but once you get it down to two, it's two, and I, and the other part is, to be honest with you, is I think the artists will bring an important perspective, but public art and the, the creation of public art is quite different than many traditional forms of art, and it's a very specialized form, and, and so I, I'm really also, I, I'm, I'm glad we're going to have some artists involved and, and that the Arts Council will be involved in directing or suggesting people, but I actually would prefer, and I'd, I'd make amendment that we, we direct that the proximity issue is removed and that we change that to two artists and two community members.
As the secondary, that's, that's precisely what I was going to propose, is, is that we go with the two professional artists and two community members, and, and there's no restriction, that you delete that, preferably resident living in close proximity of the, of the, of the installation, I think that's a better mix and I concur with the regional councillor, or deputy mayor Taylor.
I'll take.
And that somehow that NAC has to be involved, and, and I know that, if we don't involve NAC, somehow you're not going to have it, and we, you know, we set up this multicultural master plan, and they've been working hard for three years and they brought up, but they're, they're going to disappear, but you're going to lose your top people, because they don't feel they're, they're moving anything.
What about the Newmarket group of artists, are that, that two separate groups?
Well, yeah, the, the, the NAC is, has incorporated those within it, Tony, so I, I think you've got to involve this organization that we created in, in a very, very important project, or we're going to lose them, it's just like Heritage Newmarket, if you don't involve the committees we, we form, then we're going to lose them, they, they will lose interest, whether it's NEAC or NIDAC or Heritage or whatever, they just fade, they, because they, they, they don't feel they're, they're getting anywhere and they're spinning their wheels, so I think we have to involve.
Okay, thank you.
I think they are though, right, I think you clarified that they, that they're part of, who helps you pick the, they recommend jury members, yeah, okay.
And I, I will, I will, I will, as the secondary of the original, I will support deputy mayor Taylor's composition of the, of the jury we have that selects the pieces are, I think it's more balanced.
So, just for clarification, then, are we suggesting that the public art policy be amended to reflect this?
Yes.
Is that what they, okay, so that would be the second amendment, public art policy be amended, so that authorize installation of public art piece under the conditions set forth and the, as amended, right?
Yeah.
And that the word could could be in there and that the three staff members, two professional artists and two community members, I don't, I'd like us to, to move forward to this and get started, my preference would be to see three professional artists and three community members, but, you know, we're, now this is becoming a smorgasbord of issues, so I'm...
So no staff members, is that what you're saying?
Oh, no, no, the three staff members, three professional artists and three community members, and that we'd see the balance of community and artists all equidistant, but yeah, again, I don't want to get involved in procedural gymnastics on this.
I don't, I just wonder if staff worry that that's getting cumbersome, I think that might be.
Let's ask staff's opinion on it, yeah.
I, I, when I was, you know, just a feedback, who selects the moment?
Let's, let's hear from Colin and, and I'll put you in the queue as well, okay?
That would be my concern with that size of a jury, is the ability to make sure that we recruit that many people, retain them, keep them engaged and keep them, and keep the process moving so that we're not held up just by the ability to get that many people together to, to evaluate, so less is, is more.
Okay, all right, then I'll, I'll withdraw my statement then, okay, or my request, leave it with it as being proposed, I can support on that basis, yeah, okay, any further?
You also have to vote.
Okay, we good? All right, so I'll, I'll, are we clear on what we're doing?
Yep, we have three, two and two.
Three, two and two, that's, that's the amendment to the public art policy, so this will be consistent with the revised policy, and that we would change the theme to could include, all this just to have a bronze statue of the mayor with his pocket watch, anyway.
A vaper dighten, right from the sea, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor, any opposed, none opposed and that is carried, thank you, so progress, and now item number 17 is the outstanding matters, the recommendation is to receive.
I move that to the other floor.
Okay, is there a secondary? Councillor Brum, okay, as the mover, councillor Kerwin.
That staff host the pick in November to seek council, public and industry input on the potential regulation of driving school instructors operating in the town of Newmarket.
Which item is this?
Number 14, on page four.
Okay.
And I, and that staff continue to work, you know, just a question through, to Rachel, who would be handling this, have there been constant complaints for, coming in with regard to?
That might, that might be the, that might be the clerk.
Oh, the clerk, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, there have been some further concerns and complaints, however, we Legislative Services has been working with MTO and the driving school instruct, instructors and the test area, and we are, we're almost finalized some draft regulations.
Great.
We have a PIC scheduled on December the 6th.
December the which?
Six, that's a Tuesday, December the 6th.
Right.
And that is at 7:00 PM here at 395 Mulock.
December the 6th at 7:00 PM here, perfect.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a drop in style. And it's a, it's a drop in style, um, and we're just finalizing the details on that, we should have that this week. And we can send a note to council just with some, uh, further information.
Now, just a follow-up. Counselor Twitty in Ward Three had issues up on Waratah, but I, I think most of them shifted into my ward, into Ward Two, do you still have them? My ward, the streets that are affected are Wildwood, Hazelwood, and Sparrow, that's the big ones. The information of that meeting needs to be delivered personally, okay? This is the way I handle communication in Ward Two, I have the time. I will go out and, and hand-deliver those notifying these people, because they've been the ones who've been affected, and, and they're the ones who constantly phone in about, uh, the, the issue of, uh, driving schools on residential streets.
Okay, um, maybe, Mr. Mayor, if I can suggest the counselors that, I can do up a, a notice if they would like to do that type of hand-delivery?
I would.
And we actually had planned on doing that for the streets that were involved already, so perhaps we can coordinate with them.
And this, this means, Andrew, we are then proactive, and this is, this is the way I, I carry on with development, just like the one on Gorm and Lydia. I, I force the developer even have a pre-statutory meeting long before the statutory meeting, so all residents are formed and I hand-delivered, uh, the notifications in, in, in a vast area, bigger than what's required by planning. So, just, I just wanted to go back there, so I, everything's been clarified, so now I know, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And item number eight, I think there's an administrative correction, item number eight is bolded, um, and, and that, I think we'll come back when the report comes forward. It was intended? Mr. Noheimer?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I didn't reflect that change in the opening comments, but, uh, item number eight was, uh, first anticipated to be on this agenda, but it, I understand it will be on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brum.
Thank you, it could be a coincidence, but I've, uh, noticed Clear Meadow Savage Sawmill Plantation Double Tree in Columbus seems to be...
Excuse me, I, I cannot hear you, Kelly, would you...
Sure, it could be a coincidence, but I'm noticing some drivering schools on Clear Meadow Savage Sawmill Plantation Double Tree in Columbus lately. And it could be a coincidence, but it's just something that I've noticed, and maybe we should inquire of those streets as well.
Okay, we gonna add that? Clerk will make note of that? Okay, uh, so the recommendations was to receive these as amended, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried, and I believe that deals with the, some of the agenda with the exception of item number eight. Now, uh, we need to have quorum, so I just want to clarify which members of council will be here. Regional Counselor has declared a conflict, so Counselor Kerwin, Counselor Twitty?
Oh, eighteen?
Eighteen, yeah. Counselor Twitty, will you be here?
Um, I need to hear from my husband, Chris, to talk to him a bit.
Okay. Counsel, yeah, Counselor, uh, Hempin has, has needed to leave the meeting, I'm not sure if he'll be back. So, I, I'm not sure if he'll be available this evening. So, just one, two, three, four, five, so we will have, we will have quorum, okay, all right, okay. I'll, uh, we'll recess, recess then until seven? Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. No, that's okay, there are no additional, uh, action items, are there any notices or motions? Notices, motion, they're being done, reports by regional representatives?
At council.
At council, any motions? Being done, new business? Counselor Quappus?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, um, table the idea of Wi-Fi in public places and Wi-Fi in our parks. It seems that taking other towns and cities under consideration and what they can provide and the benefits of it, I just wanted to ask, uh, staff to, um, consider taking a look at the impacts or taking a look at what does that mean to New Market if we consider Wi-Fi in public places. And I'm including parks, I'm including, um, the downtown, all of that downtown, because it is becoming a tourist attraction, or it is a tourist attraction, and, um, anything with hockey arenas and so on.
Mr. McDougal?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, um, it just, it relates, uh, to the IT department, but also to IT innovations, it's, uh, there's some, some work ongoing, and, uh, staff can certainly report back, uh, with an information report to council and, uh, and advance it from there. But there is some, some work ongoing in that regard.
Okay, a reasonable timeline?
I would say within thirty days.
Thirty days? All right, okay, thank you. Regional Counselor.
Thanks very much. So, I've been speaking with, um, and Counselor Hempin, who's the Heritage Committee rep, had to leave on urgent, uh, personal matter. But I was speaking with him previously about this and also, uh, you know, getting, sharing concerns with Counselor Kerwin. And that's in regards to the Bogart House. I have to say, I'm raising this because it's gotten to the point where I feel like if something were to happen to that house, I would feel somewhat personally and certain, as a council, responsible, and I, I, it's been raised before, and some measures were taken. But at the end of the day, that is, certainly according to, uh, New Market's unofficial historian, or one of New Market's unofficial historians, Wes Plater, that is the oldest house in New Market. And for those who have been in it, and I know there's a number of people, it's, it's, it's quite an amazing house in the sense that the interior, or what's left of it at this point, is, is really almost untouched from its original form, and, and, um, Bill Elliott lived there for many years, and, and it's quite a, it's quite a place. But, um, but most importantly, it's New Market's oldest house, and, and I think if we're gonna take our, our job seriously, the stewardship of some of these buildings, and, um, I think we have to do something about it. And so I really, I think what I'm asking, I've thought about this, I think I'm asking for, um, staff to arrange a meeting with the, uh, the owner of that land and that building at this point, the, uh, Forrest Green, uh, with the Ward Counselor, the Heritage Rep, the Mayor, and myself, um, and to discuss a plan, um, and a, and a quick one. Because, again, heaven forbid something did happen, and, uh, I, I mean, I know there's some steps we can take, but I think we have to go a bit further. And I, and I'm hoping we can talk with the developer about saying, instead of waiting another two or three years, um, is there a possibility we can come up with a good plan now? How it could be situated, what could be done to it, and, and, uh, bring it back to, uh, a reasonable state, so that it, that its longevity can be ensured. And I think we need to, you know, uh, move rapidly on this, so I, I'll wait to hear from Counselor Kerwin, but I, I think I'd be just looking for probably direction to staff to arrange a, a, a meeting, um, within the next, uh, thirty days or so with the, the four people mentioned to, and, and the developer to discuss how we can, um, move, you know, move on this in a, in a, in a responsible manner and ensure that we've done everything we can. Thank you.
Counselor Kerwin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there, there used to be a gazebo on the property, and I did have it moved to the works yard. Is that still there? Okay, and we're gonna have to determine where we're gonna put this gazebo, okay, because it's deteriorating quickly. Unfortunately, uh, I've been inside the house recently, and it's a shambles, there's nothing left, John, it's all been busted up. Only the house is virtually standing, I mean, you're, you're absolutely right, Malcolm Watts has been in there doing some photographing with me, and I, I, I certainly agree with you. You know, a meeting should be called, but what we do with it, and where we move it, I, I really don't know. But what was left inside, John, has really been, been badly vandalized. I, most of the boards have been removed, and basically just the brick is standing, and, uh, I'll go over with you, you've got some time this week, and have a look at it.
Maybe with, that can be part of the discussion with the property owners, that, that we do have an opportunity to, to view the premises, and, uh, as, as part of the discussion.
We as a town have to make a decision on where we're gonna put the gazebo too. You know, I, I did have it moved.
Okay, Regional Counselor?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Counselor Kerwin, and it, it, it is in tough shape, um, but part of that's because, um, so long has been going on, and it's, you know, when houses sit vacant and they're not fixed. And so, um, you know, if it's in bad shape inside, uh, my feeling is, is that, well, then we have to deal with that. But you just don't give up on the oldest house in, in New Market, because, uh, you know, and I know that's not what you're suggesting, but I'm, I'm speaking more to the developer, that we have to find a solution, and we have to preserve and respect this house in some manner. And I believe they, they committed conceptually to working with us on that, so we now need to take it, and, and in my opinion, quickly, uh, beyond that. Because it's, again, I, I, you know, I would feel terrible if something happened and we hadn't taken the appropriate steps. So, I'm, like to, if it, if it's good enough as direction to staff, a direction to staff to, I'd say, within thirty days, convene a meeting.
Mr. Noheimer?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's, uh, certainly, uh, can be, can be arranged, and staff will arrange a meeting with the owner to, uh, to review this matter further. I know we have brought it to the attention of the developer on several occasions to maintain it, to maintain the, the grounds around the, the building. But, uh, given their comments, I think that would be entirely warranted to have a meeting with the owner, so we will, we will undertake that.
And I just want to say, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're reasonable people, and they, they've done a lot of development in New Market. I'm sure they'll, they'll, they'll sit down in, in good spirit and work with us on this. Another thing I, I should mention, I think I alluded to it, but, uh, Counselor Hempin was intending to raise this as well, and, uh, he's our Heritage Rep in the Heritage Committee, and, uh, so, I, I know he's, he couldn't be here at this particular moment, but I know he wanted to address it as well, thank you.
Okay, um, I would like to have a tour of the place as well, just to get some depth perception on the dialogue, if I'll be part of that discussion, okay? So, if we could arrange a review? Okay, good. All right, anything else? My eagerness to get to the public meeting, there's no requirement for a closed session this evening. And the only thing remaining then is the, uh, public meeting, uh, public hearing this evening. So, I'll call for a motion to recess until seven o'clock. Counselor Bazanz, Counselor Brum, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to have a look at it. I'd like to have a look at the Bogart, Bogart House. Okay, we, we do have quorum of council. It is 7:01. So if people could have a chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council and senior staff, and, and also to the public that are here tonight. As, as you're aware, this is the second statutory public meeting that we've had for this property. I'm here tonight with the owners of Oxford Developments, Mahinder Sud and Stephen Meyer, and I'm also here with our built form architect, Tony Baldicera. With respect to the revised plan, as you know, previously, last March, we presented a concept that had six stories, and it was around, I believe, seventy units. And so what we heard from the public is that there were a lot of concerns with respect to height and also the number of units. So we have reduced the height, and we've reduced the number of units. What we're proposing here is twenty-seven condominium townhouse units. These units are all plus or minus around twenty-four feet wide, so they're fairly wide townhouse units. The two access points that we show on the plan, one from Eagle Street and the other one from Cothra, have not changed. They're the same as the previous application. So we have an access road that goes down the middle. There are no driveways that front and access onto Eagle Street, so the units themselves would have a front door on Eagle Street, and their garages, the two-car garage would be in kind of the backyard or adjacent to the, the road that goes through there. So these units are two and a half stories, or sorry, three-story townhouse units, and they are anywhere from twenty-five-hundred to twenty-seven-hundred square feet each, and there's twenty-seven of, of the units. So there is a, a bit of a range there. So the elevation on the top is, is what you would see from Eagle Street. So those are the, the units. You see the, the doors that would lead into those units from the sidewalk on Eagle. And the elevation below is that same townhouse block with the garages facing the northern direction. So that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is the revised concept plan. We have submitted updates on all of the various studies that we did, and we submitted those to your staff. They, the region has provided some comments, conservation authorities provided some comments, and your staff are doing the, the technical review on that. But what, what has really changed here is the built form from a six-story rental product to a three-story townhome product in a condominium tenure. Please to listen to what comments the public may have with respect to this, or answer any questions that you may have on this application.
Thank you. What I'll do then, since this is a public meeting, statutory public meeting, I'll hear any comments from anyone in the audience. If they'd like to come forward, identify themselves, and then we'll, okay, if you can come forward and identify yourself, please. And with reputations, we permit up to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Mike Roberts. I live at 245 Rogers Road. I actually spoke at the last presentation as well that was put on by, by Oxford and by Groundswell. I guess two, two of my major concerns continue to be, is that the 2006 town plan that was approved by council that was supposed to span from '06 to 2026 specifically designates this property and the property in my neighborhood, stable residential. And I have no idea why we want to reclassify this area as emerging residential. If this is townhouses that are going into our area, then I don't know why it can't be stable residential. I don't understand the reclassification to emerging residential. Emerging residential is usually designated and stated are used for a new subdivision. I spoke at the last council meeting or the last committee of all, and I gave you the history on that area, on the fact that the area has not changed in forty-plus years. I'm not going to go through that again, but just so the council is aware, is that this area of Newmarket is the wartime section of town. It was built in back in the forties. It backs into the wartime section. The houses in the wartime section have not changed. There's been minor additions and alterations to them. They are story and a half homes occupied by families. Some of the families have been there for over twenty years. Some are younger families now that are moving in. We originally were very much opposed to the six-story apartment complex that went in. I realize that the boat has sailed on the fact that the town has sold the land to Oxford, so there is going to be some form of development going to here. I think that's a given. I would like the town to carefully consider the reclassification of the area from, from stable to emerging, keep it as a stable residential. My other concerns that I have currently with this is the fact that they're classifying them as a three-story townhouse. Our current subdivision is a story and a half area, which means that our houses are only completely two stories with, with the roofs on them. This will be actually, they call them a three-story townhouse, but if you actually look at the height of these units, they're actually a four-story house, because you're looking at three stories of living space plus a roof structure on top. And the concept drawings that we just saw today, from what the elevations look like, show a peaked roof system. The elevation on the peaks seem to be like a ten, twelve pitch, which will push the roof structures up almost another full story. So I'd like the town to maybe look at this, either go with a flat-top three-story unit, or ask for a reclassification down to a two-story unit to match what's in the existing subdivision. Twenty-seven units on that piece of property. I don't know if you've gone and looked at the property or the submissions done by Oxford and Groundswell, but the properties that are on Andrew Street that back onto those townhouses, if I'm reading the drawings correctly, from what I was seeing, it's a two-meter setback to those properties. That's just over six feet, which means that the people at the back of those houses on Andrew Street are going to be backing onto a four-story building that's two, that's six feet off the property lines. Am I incorrect in assessing that? Is that right? That's not right? It's not a two-meter setback between the lot line in those places? How far is the setback?
Maybe, maybe we can come back to that.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure staff's taking note of the, the points that are being raised, and we, some questions we may be able to answer for you tonight, others we might not be able to. But what you will see is in the report, is that all the concerns that have been raised this evening will need to be addressed in our staff's report before it comes back to council.
Okay. The only other thing I had was, once again, is I think that quite a few people raised this at the last meeting, which I think I'll, I'll raise again, is the traffic flow from Eagle on to, from, from Cothra on to Eagle, and from the new two entrances from this subdivision on to Eagle and Cothra. I don't know if anybody's been at Cothra and Eagle during the day. There's, there's a Rogers Road Public School is just down the street from that. During the day, the traffic flow is already very strong coming towards the school. We add twenty-seven more homes with traffic flow into there. Mr. Mayor, I would say that you're probably looking at, if you go ahead with this, you're probably going to need lights at Eagle and Cothra. I don't see how you're going to avoid having an accident there. It's going to be a very, very busy intersection with this development. Like I said, I don't think we can avoid the development, but I'd like to see if we can at least control development a bit and make it match our subdivision, and control the heights a bit, and maybe look at the traffic flow and what can be handled, done to handle that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to raise a concern? Does that capture everybody's thoughts there that? Okay. Counselor Bezance?
Thank you. Just a question to staff, perhaps to clarify for me. The report says that residential areas do allow for row houses, townhouses, duplexes, fourplexes, apartments, and other multi-unit buildings. But emerging residential also will permit townhouses, permit, provided the use is appropriately justified. So I'm interested in why, why would the request for rezoning if emerging residential, or stable residential already would allow for townhouses?
Mr. Nitheri?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think there actually should be a distinction in there, if I'm not mistaken. The emerging does allow for singles and semis, I'm sorry, stable does permit singles and semis, and I don't believe it permits row houses. So there might be an error in that clause in the report. The emerging designation counselor allows those two things, as well as the higher densities such as townhouses, if they are properly justified through a planning justification report. Hopefully that clarifies it.
Mr. Riddle?
I believe what the, the report is, is trying to explain, and maybe not as clearly as it should have, is that within the stable residential designation, there are existing townhomes. And ultimately, if new townhomes are, are being built under the emerging residential, eventually they would become part of the stable residential. So the stable residential designation captures a whole range of different housing forms, includes, including the, the townhomes, but only permit the singles and semis. And so that's why it's necessary for them to apply for the official plan amendment for, to the emerging residential, because that's the one that allows for the townhomes.
So, and just to be clear, so the existing neighborhood includes townhomes as part of the stable residential area?
Mr. Riddle?
Through you, there, there are existing townhomes immediately on the other side of, of Cothra. And, and throughout town, in a general sense, there are various forms of, of residential units, such as singles, semis, rows, within the stable residential.
Designation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Broom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard
The report says that residential areas do allow for row houses, townhouses, duplexes, fourplexes, apartments, and other multi-unit buildings. But emerging residential also will permit townhouses, permitted, provided the use is appropriately justified. So I'm interested in why, why would the request for rezoning if emerging residential, or stable residential already would allow for townhouses?
Mr. Nethery?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think there actually should be a distinction in there, if I'm not mistaken. The emerging does allow for singles and semis, I'm sorry, stable does permit singles and semis, and I don't believe it permits row houses. So there might be an error in that clause in the report. The emerging designation counselor allows those two things, as well as the higher densities such as townhouses, if they are properly justified through a planning justification report. Hopefully that clarifies it.
Yep. Mr. Ruggel?
I believe what the report is trying to explain, and maybe not as clearly as it should have, is that within the stable residential designation, there are existing townhomes. And ultimately, if new townhomes are being built under the emerging residential, eventually they would become part of the stable residential. So the stable residential designation captures a whole range of different housing forms, including the townhomes, but only permit the singles and semis. And so that's why it's necessary for them to apply for the official plan amendment to the emerging residential, because that's the one that allows for the townhomes.
So, then just to be clear, so the existing neighborhood includes townhomes as part of the stable residential area?
Mr. Ruggel?
Through you, there are existing townhomes immediately on the other side of Cothra. And throughout town, in a general sense, there are various forms of residential units, such as singles, semis, rows, within the stable residential.
Designation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Broom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to the question asked by the resident for a traffic light, I know that we had discussed in a previous meeting with the school being close by and safety and things like that for the kids in the area. What, at what stage would we do the traffic study, and what would be involved in confirming or getting an understanding if we would be able to get a traffic light across a section of some kind and they're confirmed?
Mr. Nethery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, part of the background work that has been done is a traffic analysis, and that will be reviewed by Rachel and our own engineering team. So through their analysis, they will be able to determine if there is any need for that currently, or if there's some conditions that need to be met in the future that would give rise to that at some future date. So when we are able to bring back a final report, we should have a better understanding of that. My, we'll have to see what happens, but I mean, at one point in time, that used to be our park's yard. So there was a fair bit of traffic that was coming and going on that, at that point in time. So Rachel's team will be looking at how that number would compare with the adequacy of the road, now that it's 27 units being proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is all part of the process as we are required under the statutory provisions of the Planning Act. At this time, given that there aren't any additional questions, Mr. Nethery, if you could just review what the next steps would be, and what the opportunities are for residents to provide any further input as we go forward.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, the, after, similarly as we discussed at the last public meeting, we've heard some comments today, we also need to receive some comments from internal and external agencies in order to fully evaluate the plan. And that will enable us to prepare a final report, which will come back before this committee at an upcoming regular Committee of the Whole. Given the timing of the Christmas season, I'm guessing that would probably be in the New Year, Mr. Mayor, and we can give notice to anyone who has provided an interest here today. In terms of what happens after that, so there will be a report, it will either make a recommendation to approve, not approve, or defer, or modify the plan. And that will be considered by committee, and then that will be, oh, and by the way, whenever that meeting is, members of the public would have an opportunity to come and hear the discussion, and they would also have the opportunity to ask the clerk to be a deputation as well. Ultimately, at a subsequent council meeting, council would be making a final determination based on what has taken place at Committee of the Whole, and they would be either approving or not approving the nature of the application.
And following that?
And then subsequent to that, there's an opportunity for an appeal to that decision of council. So the residents could launch an appeal through the O M B, or for that matter, the applicant could as well.
Thank you. So the purpose of tonight's meeting was to hear any concerns, I believe at this point we've heard all the concerns articulated by one member. Those concerns will be taken back by staff, staff will evaluate those, and the recommendations will come back to council at a future meeting. So at this point then, I will, Counselor Broom?
All right. Residents have the option to email their concerns in as well, if they didn't wish to speak.
That's a good point. Yes, yep, absolutely, and who should they send them to, Mr. Nethery?
Mr. Mayor, they can send it through the general planning email, and that way it'll get to us, so you can see that, or failing that, you can send it to either Dave or myself, and we can give you that email address. I can give you Dave's right now, if you wanted, if anyone's interested. It's D. Ruggel, R-U-G-G-L-E, at newmarket.ca. And he'll make sure that those comments are taken into account.
And regular mail as well works. So at this point then, it's a matter of us waiting and hearing what the analysis is, and then we'll go forward, and we'll have further discussions at that time. So it would be appropriate then for us to receive the presentation, and receive the deputation, refer them to staff for consideration? Can I have a motion to that effect? Counselor Quappus, Counselor Bizance? All those in favor? Any opposed? None? That's carried, and now a motion to adjourn would be appropriate. Counselor Broom, Counselor Hampton? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you.